Okay, well, let's call the meeting order. Is Mark not going to be here?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, thanks. Okay, six o'clock, I'm going to call the meeting, the planning commission to order. It's July the 8th, and it's six o'clock.
Move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, George. Close the papers, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone have a conflict of interest of any of the items on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll move along. Public comment about anything that's on the agenda. You'll also have time to make public comment about a specific item on the agenda. Okay, thank you. Good evening. Minutes of the agenda from June the 24th.
June 10th.
June 10th?
Yeah.
Oh.
Should be June 10th, yeah.
We, if you notice on the online copy, John, it says June 10th. I think on the one I printed for you yesterday, it said the 24th. I'm sorry about that.
I should have caught that, shouldn't I?
Well, we caught it, it's already fixed. Been properly uploaded.
I downloaded that.
We all make mistakes.
I know, we just got with Taylor about it.
We all make mistakes, it's how we fix them accounts.
But the minutes have the right date. My apologies.
Yep, I noticed. Any comments about the agendas?
Not the agenda, no. The minutes?
The minutes.
Minutes, I'm sorry, the minutes, I'm sorry.
I got a couple. On the old business, Gary Lane.
Yep.
Under A20XX. Comment that I made, he's got, I think it says parking path, it should be walking path.
Okay.
And then the next one, too, incentivized walking path, not parking path. XSI1.
Yep, we got it.
You got that one, okay. And then on the new business, the Chandler Road area rezoning. We need to clarify in the minutes, we didn't have a public hearing.
We did, we did. We had one because the letters went out and there was the public here, so we opened and closed the public hearing.
Okay, the minutes doesn't say we ever opened the public hearing. Says we closed it, but didn't say we opened it.
Okay.
Okay, that was confusing to me, okay.
No, it's confusing.
Yeah, that's a little confusing, I guess, but we've got to have another one tonight.
Yep, because the was a problem on the paper.
I knew that. Okay, that's all I have.
I move to approve with changes. Board?
Okay, we got a motion of support to approve the agenda with changes. Close the papers, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, let's move on. Old business, rezoning request.
Communications real quick.
Oh, communications, I'm sorry.
You're okay. Um, I don't have anything in the packet, but one item that just did come across my email that I thought was important to just, I guess, communicate with the planning commission, was it looks like the American Planning Conference, the national conference, will take place in Detroit in 2026. So I would imagine that tickets for that are going to sell quickly. So if anyone's interested, you know, just let me know and I will keep an eye out and get you guys to register. Yeah, for sure.
Great, good call, Miles, thank you. Okay, can we move on to the whole business, or the whole business, Miles?
Yep, thank you.
Rezoning request?
Uh, yep, so if everyone remembers from last time, we got a request for a rezoning. Here is an image of the two parcels that are looking to get rezoned. So kind of this larger, we call these squib parcels, and then the smaller interior landlot parcel. They're seeking to go from rural to medium density. Before my time here in Bath Township, there were a number of parcels in the same vicinity that went from, also requested to go from rural to medium density, were ultimately approved for the rezoning. So these parcels are seeking to follow suit. I did manage to include the future land use map that's currently approved and currently adopted master plan. You can see in this area, the parcels we're talking about are on the future land use map under the zoning district of medium density. So as I kind of talked about last time, there was a couple of boxes that planners usually like to check when you're thinking about a rezoning or trying to advise body on how to rezone and go about making a vote. So those boxes would be, is it spot zoning? If the answer is no, you know, you can proceed. Does it match what the intention is within the adopted future land use plan? If the answer is yes, then you can give a positive recommendation. So that is where the planning department stands on this one.
Okay, well, we need to open the public hearing because the glitch in the state journals. So I'm going to open the public hearing. Does anyone want to comment on the rezoning? No takers at all? Well, we've got another person coming. Good evening, are you here to comment on the rezoning of the parcels on Chandler Road? Oh, it's Kami, I'm sorry, didn't recognize her with a headband on. Okay, well, I guess I'll close the public hearing then. So you want to note that, Miles, for?
We got it, thank you.
So we're in compliance with the law.
I do have one comment. And our, in the minutes for the last meeting, we're correct. Paul Ross, who's the president of the Landings Home Run Association, made a comment that he felt the Home Run Association would not be in favor of this. That's his personal opinion, never been discussed, never been with anybody else. It's not my opinion, and I doubt that it's the opinion of the people up there because you see it, they're not going to be impacted by this at all.
We will note that because I think that's important insight.
Yeah, I think that was, I look at that as his personal opinion, not the opinion of the Landings.
Did he give any rationale for that opinion? I don't remember specifically.
I don't know why he felt that, we've never discussed it. I'm on the board too, so, the board's never discussed it, so I know that that never happened, so. I think that's his personal opinion, he just expanded it more than what he should have.
Miles, can you see any negative reasons, drawbacks for making this change?
Not really, I mean practically speaking, you know, the department has kind of held to the standards which I have already laid out of like if we're yes or no on it. Practically speaking though, just in my personal opinion, this will help these parcels better align with the character of what's there on the road right now. I think it would be more invasive if like some large agricultural use was to come in and set up shop there. That almost seems more invasive than the potential of a single family home to be built closer to the side yard setback.
A giant hog operation?
Yeah, like that. That feels more invasive to the character of the community than.
Okay.
Move to approve the rezoning of this parcel.
Two parcels.
Two parcels under consideration. Do you need more details as to zoning from?
I don't need the, you don't have to roll off the parcel numbers. I appreciate it.
Support. Okay, there's a motion and a second for the rezoning of the parcel. Any more discussion about it? He's got any? Okay, let's do a roll call vote, Miles.
Okay, great. Trustee Hagerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Coulter.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
Commissioner Almorigi. I need to start saying mister, just like they do with the board.
Yes.
And then Commissioners Every.
Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
I have one separate comment on your land use map. You have club courses spelled wrong. It's course like driving over all those speed bumps instead of course like golf course. Just to note.
That's good to know, I'm hoping.
For the future.
Yeah.
Just to note for the future if you're going to use this in other things.
I appreciate you saying that, I didn't make this, but I am. I'm very, I think this was actually made in like 2004. I'm very happy that I think through our comp plan process, we'll be taking a good look at our future land use map because it needs some updating.
It certainly does.
And there's no speed bumps on the club course.
Oh, really?
No, one of the classic, one of the club course.
Oh, okay. I just golfed there the other day and I feel like I.
A lot of alcohol drive.
Yeah, there sure is. Okay, let's move to the zoning board of appeals fee schedule, Mark.
Yeah, so we included in the packet last time, I guess this is maybe the formal introduction of this item. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
I'll follow up via email tomorrow. The, this is the formal introduction for this item. Last time, we just attached a memo with some rationale of how we did our analysis and what this actually cost the township. Most of those numbers are pretty fixed, the only number, because it's really just the current staff cost times and plus the members of the zoning board of appeals themselves. The only cost that's, I would say fairly dynamic right now, is the ever increasing cost to notice things in the newspaper, which right now, we're sitting anywhere from about $185 to $200 a notice. So at that price point, our current zoning board of appeals fee of $150 isn't even covering the notice costs. So we, and we felt like we made pretty conservative estimations of like what it takes in via staff time and zoning board of appeals time for staff time. We said, gave it a very generous, it only takes us one hour to evaluate a recommendation and put something together. Obviously, there's going to be ZBA instances where it's going to take its days to do research. But typically, we're able to come to our conclusions pretty quickly. And then for the ZBA themselves, we lowballed it, it would only take one meeting to evaluate. Now, sometimes they have to table the issue, more research is needed, and it can go to a second meeting. But most of the time for the ZBA, it's a one, one and done meeting thing. But with all of that taken into consideration, the bare minimum cost that we got to just covering our fees was $448. And for the purposes of just creating a round number, we went with a recommendation for the minimum cost of $450. And then we took every other subsequent fee above that, and we just took whatever amount that was increased by and applied that to the next fee above it. So that was kind of a rationale of how we got these fees. Obviously, these are subject to opinion and interpretation and, you know, we're open to adjusting these in any way this body sees fit.
Move to approve the fee schedules as presented.
A second? Support? There's a motion and a support. Anyone want to have any discussion about it?
Besides what's highlighted, everything else stays the same?
Yep.
Kate, you had something?
My only thought would be, what's, I understand the time rationale, but what if someone were to say, well, isn't that what property taxes are supposed to pay for? Is the jobs that the township do, isn't this part of what the township is supposed to do? Just playing devil's advocate.
No, I think that is a fair argument, and that's one we get a lot. So the counterargument to that is the township pays, your taxpayers pay for, your tax dollars pay for a variety of services, right? Police, fire, and then I would put zoning services under that umbrella. However, when it comes to zoning board of appeals request, you as the citizen are kind of going above and beyond what the typical services are provided. Therefore, that's where the fee structure kicks in because you can make the argument, I'm not saying this is a fair argument to me, I'm just again making the argument. You could say the general taxpayer shouldn't subsidize your deck expansion. Like the general taxpayer has paid for us to work with you guys and make a set of standards that apply to decks. Now you personally are wanting to go outside of that, then you should bear the cost of that.
Well, these certainly aren't designed to make money for the township.
No, this is break even with the best of assumptions.
In a lot of cases, it's actually going to cost us more than we're going to collect.
Yeah, we're still probably losing.
Provide the service.
Yeah, and again, the real driver of upping these costs isn't even anything we're doing here within the confines of this building. It's the newspaper noticing, it's almost half of this.
Correct.
Is that a state rule?
It is.
Yes.
I feel like I've asked that before, but.
Yes, it is state. Any other, all right, let's do another roll call, this has got to go to the board.
All right, cool. Trustee Hagerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Coulter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Baker.
Yes.
Chair Wright.
Yes.
Commissioner Almorigi.
Yes.
Commissioners Every.
Yes.
Again, better. All right.
Practice makes perfect, I guess.
Yeah, it really does.
Okay. So the next item is the space cube introduction. And we looked at this briefly last week, or last meeting, I should say.
No, I don't think, no, we didn't, so just.
Well, we didn't, we didn't, I guess.
Yeah, I'll cover it in a report from planners, like general department updates.
Absolutely.
And then I think Kate will probably cover it more in her trustee report, how the memorandum item played out at the board. But I, if you're not aware at this point, there wasn't a large support for it at the board. It basically got shot down. It was requested that they did not be brought back to the board. It seemed like there was good consensus on that. In the meantime, obviously, the developers here tonight, they were at that board meeting. So they were aware that, you know, that was no longer an item on the agenda, at least on the township's radar. In an effort to bring this project forward and keeping things moving, they requested to get an introduction on tonight's meeting and worked with the planning department to submit all the necessary materials, including, you know, the application itself, a set of plans that were at least at the point where introduction could take place. We don't have a full set of plans yet, so it's worth noting that, you know, we haven't launched any agency review or anything like that. And then obviously paid the fees that it cost to bring a land use permitted by special use permit before the township, and an escrow account has been set up.
Miles, can you clarify, I lost the point at which board made, had action versus developer, was wanting to move things forward? So everything that you said, was that the board asked that this be accelerated and moved to the planning commission?
No, that's a good question to clarify. The board only discussed the memorandum and gave direction on how to proceed with that, which was not to proceed.
The moratorium.
The moratorium, oh, memorandum, I bet, yeah.
Moratorium, I'm sorry.
And they also indicated that they did not want this to come back to them?
That's correct.
The moratorium, correct.
That's correct.
And then in.
Not this in any specific capacity, but the moratorium got zero traction.
The moratorium, I'm so sorry.
But all the remainder was the developer wanted to move this.
But the developer separately reached out to the planning department and worked with us to move this item forward and get it before you guys.
So nothing has gone before agency or?
Nope, we're just.
This is just concept?
Just concept introduction. What the developer is likely seeking from this body tonight is general input about the land use itself, the proposed layout, what are your thoughts? This is the step in the process where, and every community does this different, but one thing we like to do in Bath Township is introduce a project, get some initial feedback from the planning commission in this body. That way, if there is some alignment that's misaligned on the plan, or a row of trees that's really important to them, or something like that, that gets identified early. That way, you guys don't build out a full set of site plans, spend, you know, a good amount of money, and then have to go back to whoever's producing your site plan and say, hey, can you move this tree 20 feet? And now you have to spend a bunch of money again. So it's intended to help the process run smoother and save everyone time and money.
So, Miles, in the past, you've labeled these as pre-introduction meetings.
Yeah.
Where there's general feedback. Now, is this a different type that starts the clock?
Well, the clock starts once we receive an application for us to bring it before this body, then the body.
We haven't received an application.
We have received an application, and once, by our ordinance, once we receive an application, I believe it's, off the top of my head, we have 35 days to get it in front of the planning commission. There is, however, a difference between a preliminary and an introduction. A preliminary is maybe a step down from an introduction. To do a preliminary, you don't even have to have a formally rendered or set a site plan. It could be a plot plan, like literally a hand sketch for a preliminary. Because of the work that the applicant had already brought to the table, it necessitated an introduction.
One clerking, the action the board took had nothing to do with this project?
Nope.
Okay, that was confusing to me.
But I will say that this, these developers, as well as some others, came and spoke against the moratorium, essentially in support of their projects.
That's fair, yeah.
So are you saying that that's tacit approval from the board for this project?
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is it is a denial of the proposal, the proposed moratorium on storage.
In relevance to the current project?
No, I don't think specifically, no.
Your language is quite coarse to that.
I think the perspective of the planning commission is viewed through a different lens than that of the board of trustees, whereas the planning commission acts from the perspective of, ideally, what do we see? How do we want things to be developed in Bath Township over the long term? Versus the board of trustees, who have to weigh that along with, there are many other projects that we need done, and we need some tax money and current projects that have applications in our way of getting us some tax money. I feel that was sort of the gist of the conversation, is it didn't have anything to do with storage or not storage. It had to do with, this is a project that's going to generate some tax revenue for the township.
So it's sort of the board is putting money ahead of good planning.
I was in attendance at the meeting.
What's that?
I was in attendance at the meeting. I would say that was, I don't know that I'd phrase it that way, Ray, but I think that was a perception.
Was it brought before the board that we have no language within our zoning?
Yes.
On that regarding self-storage facilities?
Yes, in fact, I talked to several board members before the board meeting to find kind of where they were at and got, you know, neutral. So I didn't know what was going to happen at the board meeting, quite honestly.
Yeah, I would say it was discussed, from what I recall, the problem that zoning administrators will often have when there's not a perfect land use to put something into, and you have to pigeonhole it into land uses that are adjacent to it. And then when the, once you pigeonhole it into that land use, that can lead to interpretations and the ordinance have to be made, or there's not clarity on how to go about reviewing that land use. And storage historically has been one of those in Bath Township. So at least it was discussed in some detail, I think, of what you're getting at.
Create the burden for us to fulfill the mission that we've been entrusted by the board of trustees.
Yes, in the timeframe we have to work with.
I agree that I thought the timeframe of the strategic planning slash comprehensive plan process didn't, I thought that that offered some good rationale for a pause, but.
Did the board?
It was pretty obvious that there, it, there was no, there was not enough votes to carry it forward.
Was there a vote that?
There was no vote.
No. So there's no action?
There was no action.
Right, correct.
And it was on the agenda only as an introduction, an item for introduction. And it was basically, we were not going to take action, so it did not come back last night at the next meeting.
Yeah, and there was a conversation between myself, Karen, and the supervisor to clarify for staff, like, yes, the direction is to not bring this back. Like that is, that's the sense we got, are you, is that the sense that you were providing to us at the end of the meeting? You know?
Yeah, and it was.
And they were like, yes, that is the sense that you are getting is correct. And we're like, okay, thank you.
Well, I got that directly from the supervisor.
Yeah, so.
I have my own communications with him.
Okay, so at this point, I would say the charge is still the same, though. This body is here to review developments that come before the township. This is a development permitted by special use permit. In the past, it is within the D development district, which there are a couple of areas in the township where that district is prominent. One of those though would be the food bank south of Drumhiller. It would be west of Webster Road area of the township. I think long-term, the envision for this area has always been somewhat of a commercial industrial park, although I don't think that's ever been formalized. You know, that's something that, that would be another good topic of conversation for the comprehensive plan, is formalizing some of these districts for, not even in terms of zoning, but where are our industrial districts? Where are our commercial districts? Where are residential? Anyways.
So just to divest a little bit. Within the last few years, I think related to the Webster corridor project, we did receive community input as to what they would like to see in this corridor. And so I would say we should bring that data back to this body to take under consideration as to what proportion of residents identify self-storage facility as a ideal land use in this location.
Okay, yeah, I think that's wise. Okay, going back to the site plan, obviously, I'm not going to count the number of units. I already had to do that once when I sent these guys the fee. But it's many, and it seemed like, the developer can speak to this, I can't, but it seemed like there was some phasing that might take place there. That was my sense from you guys when we had our initial discussion. The building that you're seeing to the north of the site, more towards the roadside, is probably best represented by this type of rendering here within the packet. I'll try to zoom in on that, I'm zoomed out for the plan itself. But that's kind of, I would say, the more aesthetically pleasing building on the site, more their, you know, corner facing building where the renderings they provided for the storage buildings themselves are just more classic steel buildings, doors on both sides, which you can see those by the blue metal type roofs. Looks like they're sending a lot of the drainage to where the wetter areas of the parcel are now, which is to the south and to the west. Utilizing what the chair was pointing out to me is this long branch of the parcel here, which you can also see on this older fetched GIS imagery. It kind of goes, the parcel goes all the way back here, which, again, we haven't done our open space and a lot of coverage analysis yet, because as I've stated in the past, now when we do the agency review moving forward this year, whenever the agency review comes back, you'll notice now there will be a new tab that says zoning review, and we'll give our whole zoning review under that. But I would assume that's likely going to help with their open space calculation because there is obviously a lot of impervious surface on this type of land use. One thing that's probably worth noting that at least staff liked about this facility that's being proposed, counter to some of our currently operating storage facilities, is that the area that's designated for vehicle or boat storage is to be enclosed in more of a carport style building with one open, one open side of it where vehicles can pull, trailers and boats and whatnot can pull in and out. It's more environmentally friendly, it's more aesthetically pleasing, it keeps the site a little bit more organized. I would assume there's probably some theft benefits to that as well. And some storage benefits to the customers as well. The developers are here tonight to answer any of the questions this body has. It's about the best overview I can provide.
Miles, is it possible to speak? Is it supported this?
Do you want to open the meeting as a full? What's the planning commission's desire? Nobody wants to say me.
I think it'd be fine.
I'll open the meeting then as a whole. So anybody who wants to make a comment, step up to the podium, identify yourself.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome, Tim.
I like the term tacit approval. I'm there. My name's Tim Fair, I'm the director of Clinton County Catalyst. Clinton County Catalyst is economic development within Clinton County, which includes Bath Township. Bath Township is a member of Clinton County Catalyst. So we look for you guys. Space Cube does a member of Clinton County Catalyst, so does Kessler Development. And it's amazing, you know, we have sixteen townships in Clinton County. And I've said this before, and I'm gonna say it again, you have one of the best planners within the county, you really do. Miles has done a great job, and I'm a fan of Miles. I'm on the planning commission of DeWitt Township. I have been for fifteen-plus years. So I sat in your seat last night. We had a three-hour meeting, we had over two hundred people in the audience, because we were dealing with our Redwood development, and it got a bit of a brouhaha last night. But I understand where you're coming from. I called our township to find out about storage facilities within DeWitt Township, within DeWitt Township. And I updated it, we have five storage facilities. Each one of them has at least fifty units. Four of them have over a hundred units. We have a sixth one in the process right now. So when we came before the trustee board, we talked about the moratorium and said, hey, let the market determine how this should play out. Most of your storage facilities are down on M-78. Some people don't even think they're in Bath Township when they're down on M-78. And what these guys have done in St. John's, Space Cube that is, what they've done in St. John's, what they've done in DeWitt, through, well, through that area, they have built the nicest storage facility that I've ever seen. It's amazing, and it looks really good. Now.
Where is it located in DeWitt?
Well, it's not in DeWitt, it's in St. John's. But if you combine what the storage facilities look like between DeWitt and St. John's, that's the best-looking facility, no question. And I'm just gonna go out and say this, I'm a fan of Darrell Kessler. Why? Because I play golf. I mean, these are the best golf courses anywhere near here. And what he has done in Bath Township, DeWitt Township, this area, is phenomenal. And I think what he's done, you know, Webster's sixty-nine, Norm Fastener's notwithstanding, you know, it's amazing what he's done, and I think it's neat that they're working together, and I think it's a good fit. And I would hope that you would consider approving this, and thank you for the time.
Any questions?
Oh, I'll take questions if you have questions.
Any questions?
Hi, Kami.
Hi. I'm just here as, on behalf of Kessler Construction, Kessler Development, down there. We feel and we support this group. We feel that this is the perfect fit for it. You have the Greater Lansing Food Bank behind it, and the gas station's coming in front. That's, that road that's up there, the cars from the food bank, it can't tolerate a ton of traffic, because the food bank has specials, you know, people pick up and do pickups and stuff. The property where Country View used to be, where we have the old lawn shop, we've had food bank people parked and circling our drives. There's, there has been an issue here or there with us getting in and out. And I think that if you were to put a business in there that's gonna have a lot of traffic coming in, it's just gonna make the area completely more congested. We feel that their design is very appropriate. It's, I think it's, it's gonna be a great fit for the property. And their designs are, you know, they're, they're nice looking. They're not like an old storage barn that, you know, is undesirable, undesirable. So we're, we're in full support of this. Obviously, we wanna sell the property as well, but the taxes that will come in on this are gonna be a whole lot better than vacant land. And keeping in mind that, you know, the areas in front and behind it are gonna be busy and moving. Just feel it's a very good fit for this area. And there's, there's people that need storage all over the place. You know, and the ones that are on M-78, when I heard there were five in Bath Township area, I was like, where? You know, I didn't realize that there were so many out on that road there. But anyway, we're in full support of it and feel it, it would work great for the community.
Thank you. Oh, by the way, did you ask Mr. Kessler about that fifty-foot little dogleg? Did he have a plan for that? Was that there for a purpose, or?
I don't believe it was there for a purpose, just that it extends out, and it's just the way it was drawn up. The food bank needed that parcel. And the one good thing, too, that, you know, they're not gonna have, like, all kinds of indoor plumbing and, and need to be tied in.
Right.
So that's another plus. You know, your connections are, are not gonna be used up.
Anyone have any questions for Kami? No?
I don't think I have any.
Okay, thanks, Kami.
How are you? My name's Nick Krueger, I'm one of the developers and owner of Space Cube. Matt and I, we're just, we're just a small community-type guys. I grew up in Morris. Matt grew up in Fowlerville. You know, we just, we, we opened our first storage facility in St. John's. It's an eighty-two thousand square foot facility. We built it in eight months. When we put that there, we wanted to make sure it looked nice for St. John's. And I, that's something that we would do here, too. I mean, we're not just gonna put in garbage. I've never liked just the, the look of just a plain storage facility, you know, gravel lots. You know, we want, we're gonna be putting asphalt in, fully fenced, gated. You know, the technology that most, most facilities in the city would have. You know, this is something that, it's gonna be the only one north of sixty-nine for, you know. So it's actually gonna be in Bath. I don't think Bath even has its own storage facility. I think in Bath Township, they have five facilities. I think the closest one is three-point-five miles away.
Closest one's actually in DeWitt.
What's that?
Closest one's actually in DeWitt along with Chandler.
In Bath Township, though?
To the village area of Bath Township, if that's what we're referring to.
So what I just have tracked here is, so there's ones, Compass Self-Storage, and then Storage Sense, which is five-point-four miles away, but that's the ones that I came up with. I guess I would have to look into one in DeWitt.
No, your, your data's correct, it's, but it's what we're talking about, if we have, we've bordered DeWitt Township, so.
Yeah, so we would, we would base, we base our numbers off a five-mile radius.
Yeah.
And that's what, storage per capita is what we're looking for. We're not gonna overseg, we don't wanna over-saturate the market, because then, then it doesn't make any sense for us as business owners. We're not gonna make any money. Nobody's gonna use our storage facility, there's just too much. We already did some of the research, you know, I think we had tracked about, in the five-mile radius, we are catching some of DeWitt. And then all the way to, I think, Premier Storage, which is on the edge of Bath Township. We are, that, with those numbers tallied up, it is below the national average of self-storage per capita in the area. So that's what we're coming up with, the amount of storage and the amount of population that's, that we have. This facility would be a total of fifty-seven thousand square foot, total of two-hundred-seventy-six units. Some of the units that we'd be looking at building is some that were a little oversized for some businesses. Because in our storage facility in St. John's, we have quite a few businesses, contractors, just other small businesses, tile, tile companies, they actually use those for, for their inventory storage, which helps them, they don't have to go build a pool barn. I think in Bath, I think this would be pretty helpful to some of the smaller contractors that, you know, need, need something. So some of the points that, based off of you guys' last planning commission, I'm just, I made some notes. I think we got a hit on that. The amount of storage in the area. I think we've got a hit on the visual appearance of it. You know, you guys can see what our pictures are of our facility that we have now. Our, the traffic impact, Kami kinda hit on that a little bit. So we, we can pull up records of how much traffic's coming in our, our facility. On Mondays, we have a total of, on average, forty-three entries onto our site. Saturdays, we'd have, we have an average around seventy entries onsite. So those are some of the business owners coming in and out, just regular tenants coming in and out. So whatever's, you know, it looks like there's gonna be a gas station being built there, possibly, and then what other businesses. That's stuff that they're gonna end up using as they're coming through there. We talked about some of the tax revenue. Based off of the square footage, I believe that's how some of the taxes are generated, is off the square footage of the buildings. And with us having fifty-seven thousand square foot, I mean, that, that could be a decent amount of tax revenue. Jobs, I think that was some of the issues, what kind of jobs are we gonna be bringing? We, we tend to hire local businesses for landscaping, snow removal, pest control, maintenance. You know, we wanna keep that in-house, you know, in the community that we're in, because, I mean, that's important to us. I mean, growing up in a village of Morris, smaller than here, I mean, that's what I value, is the people that live in the community. Kami kinda hit, hinted on the utility impact. We wouldn't be tying into the sewer or the water, so I think there's some already stress on, on your guys' utilities, what I've kinda heard a little bit about. So that's something that we wanna impact on. But those are kinda some of the points and concerns that I was hearing from some of the members.
So there's no bathroom facility in your main building?
No, 'cause it, it would only be just climate-controlled.
Oh, so where would the?
Storage.
Who, would anybody work there?
So we would remotely run it from St. John's. So we have a manager onsite there, and they would run it remotely. And then either every day or every other day, somebody would become onsite, check in facilities. We'd also have fully-monitored.
Okay, so but there would be no, like, regular onsite employee?
Correct.
Okay.
So this picture's being shown right now, it looks like it's a retail spot, so you wouldn't, you would not have that here, then?
That would be here. So in one of the renderings, this is just a preliminary one, but this is gonna be pretty close to the, to the design. I think it's down one more slide.
This is the building, though, that would be the?
Yeah, so that would be your main building that you'd come up to. So this is kind of the starting point of what it's gonna look like. That's kind of the shape. The other corner, which would be facing the, the gas station, if that goes up, that would be glass as well on the front.
But mostly, this building would be vacant, I mean, as far as people are concerned.
So.
It would only be storage.
It would just be like these climate-controlled units that you can see in the window. One question that came up before the meeting, I think maybe because of this rendering with the U-Haul trucks, are you guys trying to operate U-Haul out here, or what's?
Not here.
Okay.
Because of us not having onsite manager, we wanna be able to do that?
Yeah, it's kind of a concern. Okay.
So the kind of storage facility, we've had proposals from other people that talk about a lot of different kind of storage. Then, as mentioned here, there was one that actually had toilet facilities in their storage things, which you're not gonna do. So what do you envision this storage being of? I need to be educated in storage, because I've used a storage facility in Bath, I was gonna bring that up. On Chandler Road, on the east side of Chandler Road, there's a storage facility right there that I believe is in Bath. That's the one I've used before. And, and my thing of storage facility is, is families like me, I'm moving from apartment to a house or something, I gotta store stuff for a while.
Isn't that East Lansing?
No, this is, this is us. This is their four-twenty-five, this is their four-twenty-five, this is us.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess you're talking about a lot of contractors, other people using, what kind of storage, what kind of clients do you expect to have here, then? Because it's, it's not residential storage. It could be, but majority of it's not going to be.
What, what were you saying about the contractors?
Well, contracts are gonna store their materials and stuff here, or something, I'm not sure.
Right. Yeah, they, they wouldn't be a lot of work in them.
Right.
But they're, they would be able to store their materials. You know, we get lawn care companies, they store their lawn equipment, they're gonna grab it, take it off, go to their, their job. We have a tile company that stores his, his tiles there. We have another company that stores some of their inventory. So they, they're in and out, you know, they spend probably, maybe, maybe do a half an hour, maybe, loading up some of their stuff, and then they're out. But I think with, if you're, if you're concerned about the bathrooms, and I know this hasn't happened yet, you know, you would have the gas station there. That was.
No, I prefer you didn't have one.
This is relevant to another development that's coming through, Diamond Accents Development, which I think they're including bathrooms to promote commercial use of facilities, the, the storage facilities, like auto repair, or.
Like a mixed type of?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's been, we've looked at storage condos, which is be something more like that, where there's a community bathroom, or one in that site, but now we cannot have that here.
When would you anticipate this opening?
Well, it all depends on how fast we can get permitted. I mean, once we get the necessary permits, something like this, first phase, we could probably have it built within, you know, when we start breaking ground, four months.
Can you talk more about the phases?
We haven't really determined what phases are gonna be starting. I've kind of went over some of the numbers and what makes sense to our, our loan, and how those kind of pencil out. Phase one would be our climate-controlled building, this one, this one, this one, and that top one first. Phase two, we're looking at doing that one, that one, these two, and then that one, because that's gonna be making our perimeter. And then these last four would be phase three, is what our initial thought is.
Would you plan for between phases, or until fully phased out or developed, would there be open storage of boats and other things in the open yard?
That's if, if that was approved, but doesn't sound like open storage is, is wanted. I mean, it's something that we could look into, but if it's something that Township doesn't want, then we won't do it.
For my, my curiosity is, what's, and you might just not know this yet, what do you think the time between phases looks like? We talk in a year, are we talking seven?
So lease up rate, we can kind of determine our lease rate, up rate, determined, we're thinking phase one, roughly about twelve months. And then we would start phase two right after that, and it'd be pretty close to the same phasing, phase two. So we're, I mean, it is a guessing game how fast we, we think we could lease up. And that's what we kind of came up with initially.
Now, where is the facility in St. John's located?
It's right on US Highway twenty-seven, a mile and a half south of Walmart.
Oh, okay, on the east side or west?
It would be on the west side.
On the west side?
You know where the new county garage is, Ray?
Yeah.
It's right south of there.
Okay.
On the west side, same side as the.
Yeah.
Miles, I got a question. It says use outdoor storage. That really concerns me.
Well, that's the, that is that pigeonhoeing of land uses that I was talking about. I think it's an imperfect land use for what this is, but if you go back into the township's record of what these five other storage facilities have been classified under, that is the land use they've been classified under. It doesn't, I, I, it's imperfect, and it's something that should be addressed to, I think, Commissioner Almeridge's point. And maybe because, this is a work item that I think should be on the action plan of the comprehensive plan is, you know, these undefined or ill-defined land use categories, of creating more appropriate terminology for them, and then better defining them within the ordinance itself. But I wouldn't want the planning commissioners to think outdoor storage means a bunch of stuff in a field is what you're permitting. But I wouldn't want the planning commissioners to think outdoor storage means a bunch of stuff in a field is what you're permitting. This is the land use category that most similar matches, the land use that's being proposed, that's what we pigeonholed into, and that's how it gets coded into BSNA. At the end of the day, that's a land use that's permitted by special use permit, and it's tied to a site plan, which is what you're approving.
So, going back to the East Lansing storage facility.
Okay.
So, I don't think we ever, it was ever been aware to us that there would be just open storage of vehicles, boats, that would be viewable and unscreened?
It is on their site plan, they have large, and I, it, one thing where what was built in reality actually doesn't match the site plan is the markings never got put there, but there is a large lots of parking. So even if I, even if it wasn't specifically talked about, and again, that, these approvals were before my time here, and I think happened during COVID, so like not a great time to be doing approvals.
No.
Um, cuz communication just probably wasn't ideal, you weren't able to all get in a room and talk like this, but even if it wasn't mentioned, I would think they would make the case of like, it says clear, it, it's clear that parking's here.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, well.
Oh, yeah.
There was, I, I don't know if you remember, I mean, I think you brought it up last night, there wasn't, you know, active discussion about what that, those spaces would?
Yeah, I think the review for that one and the review for Terror Vista, I think they call it now.
Yeah.
The, uh, for, yeah, I mean, there's just, there's a number of tools that we're lacking in the toolbox that would be useful to staff. But the good news is, I think, that it's nice that we've had that in our recent history, because those are lessons learned, and some of the things we can avoid in these future proposals.
So that language would be put into the special use permit if it went?
Well, I think in this case, it seems like the developers largely trying to, and just in my opinion, and they are here obviously, so just anyone correct me if they think this is wrong, but, um, I think they're trying to stave off that whole dialogue, debate, whatever you wanna say, where it is a hot button issue for vehicle outdoor storage by saying, hey, we're, we have these enclosed places where vehicles are gonna be.
But this body would like to see no open space, or?
Yeah, and that would be a perfectly legal, and you could argue wise condition to put on this. And I, I think it was good to bring up, because storage typically is phased in, and in my limited experience with seeing storage developed, typically they will build a couple of structures, get those rented up, and then build a couple of structures more. It probably would also, if this, if the intention of this body is to control for the storage of outdoor materials, vehicles, to get a condition in there to Commissioner Almaridge's point about as a phasing's going, you can't just use that as a parking lot.
Well, we had that problem with the people on Chandler Road over the carports. Remember, they ordered the material, that was during COVID. And they stored it there for months on end, before they erected them.
That would be the only caveat, I could see that you, there need, would need to be flexibility, though, is like, if they're actively building a storage unit, building, but you're not allowing this material of building materials, that could be problematic, like, how are we possibly supposed to build? So we'd probably have to create some language of s- storage of materials not coincidental to the construction of buildings on the site.
So it's storage of building materials would be a problem for a self-storage facility?
In the short run, it could be, it could be. So we'd have to wordsmith that language a little bit.
George? I just wanna make a comment about landscaping, not just on this site, not to get off on a rabbit trail, but I've just noticed a, a lot of sites, for instance, along the freeway of the other storage facility, where you can readily see that. If that was screened properly, you went, I mean, that's great advertising for them, because you see what it is. But on the other hand, if we wanted to be a rural community, even if they planted small trees and they grew over five, ten years, that, that site would be, you would see that site, and it would still have the appearance of a rural community, just like going down Park Lake Road, where you have all the old trees that got cut back from consumers and stuff, that used to be real rural looking. And now it's looking more and more like development, where if that's, that was, them trees were replaced, or if we now put more plantings in there, over time, you know, five, ten years, then it would start to look like a rural road again. So I just wanted to, wanted us to think about that in all our developments, as we move forward, what that might look like.
I, I think that's a good point, cuz I've had a big issue about trees and street trees and stuff for a long time. I think we need to take a look at our tree ordinance, not just require street trees to start, we've gotta be a maintenance of street trees. In other words, if a tree dies in your front yard, you gotta replace it.
Right, but that's where I, I struggle too with that, is people tell me, like, in this case, you know, if, if it's my property, I'd say, hey, I wanna build a storage unit there. You know, quit telling me what I can do with my property.
But with a special use permit, we can enforce that they replace the tree, right?
Landscaping is well within the legal nexus. And then the enforcement fall, I mean, that's something that falls on staff, that falls on our complaint-based system, but if you're seeing a tree that's dead, you know, let us know, and we'll go back to the approved land use plan. If it's on the plan, they're getting a new tree.
Just like we had trouble with the, where Domino's is now.
The, only the Domino's now.
What was it before that?
It was a Tim Hortons.
So I don't, was it that, or was it the, cuz that's a self-storage facility now?
Noco.
Yeah.
It was Noco loss that we had to enforce on, some of their landscaping dying, it was, fell into disrepair, and then we were able to work with Cody Shepherd, and we're in a better place now.
Would you prep the whole site and then build as you get cash flow? Is that the plan?
We would prep it in the very beginning, you know, we, we grade it. And we'd start asphalting the phases, we would asphalt everything, obviously, because
Right.
we, we gotta get the concrete everywhere that we do the asphalt. So we would asphalt around the buildings that we have existing. You know, we'd do our first step, and then after we get everything built up, then we would do our final layer.
So I'm sure one of the concern of the drain commission is gonna be erosion.
Right.
And are these all fully metal buildings, or are they wood-framed?
These are all metal.
Metal frame, okay.
I think one thing that's concerning, I have, not here, I don't think we're here, but Tim knows. Into Whit, we've got that, they've got that huge site, One O'Clock Road, that's been vacant for years. Nothing's happened, except they cleared it, totally cleared it up.
It's happening this fall.
Is it? Good.
It is.
What you're talking about on the north side of Clark Road, east of the Tumbleweed Mall there?
Yeah, that's, that's the one.
Oh, is McKinsey finally gonna do something with that?
That's ours.
Well, I thought that was a joint partnership, cuz I saw McKinsey out there doing the grading. Oh, it's Hyde's? Oh, lots of luck on that one. Um, anybody got anything else they'd like to ask? Miles, I'm sure we haven't done any lot coverage on this, but this looks to me like it's
It's getting there.
Pushing the limit of the green space and the lot coverage.
It's getting there, it'll be interesting to do the lot coverage count for this one, for sure.
I guess we got my, 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 I'll read, Nick and I, partners on this. So the, the parcel, like it was pointed out, Doglegs, off to the west. I believe that's for handling drainage and the ultimate outlet for the stormwater. It's wet to the south, it's wet to the west. The food bank, parcel, I believe, was designed to account for stormwater for this parcel. It has to be confirmed, you know, with engineering and shooting the pond, checking detention volume. We accounted for stormwater onsite that would handle the onsite stormwater, which is what's shown here. I did run a count on coverage, and we're at thirty-seven percent green space.
Okay. And our minimum requirement in this district is thirty, so they're four percent above the minimum. And those, we'll obviously run our own software through that.
You, you've covered all the impervious surface, right? Not just the building?
Building and pavement, correct, yeah, all the impervious. And then what's left, greenbelt on the property is thirty-seven percent open space.
And I think the more trees you can squeeze on this property and the perimeter, this to soften the impact coming off the freeway would be good.
Even if there were, some of them were seedlings, or, you know, not seedlings, but smaller trees that would grow in time. Cuz we had the soft side up there on Lansing Road, the soft side trailer manufacturer, a dozen trailers, that was supposed to be screened, you know, and they had X amount of trees, well, they, they met that, but when you go by there, you don't see that. It's very sparse.
Why? Cuz they're just, they were planted?
They're just, it's
They're smaller trees, okay.
Whatever the coverage was required was, and really, by my liking would done.
Well, I think typical, like, industry standard, if you're, you know, putting these trees on here, you're looking for a developer typically to establish a plant that's three to six years in its growth. If you want more than that, then, you know, you need to say that, you know?
So do we have any data on the existing storage units, like percent capacity filled, anything like that?
No, we haven't run it market.
Imagine that's tough to get.
Going back, that, that would've been something that would've been studied via, um, oratorium.
I wouldn't, wouldn't have thought you'd have that, but, and this is kind of in a different area than most of the storage. So I don't think there's a serious competition issue there. What about to the north, what's a potential development there?
Well, the best person in this room that could probably answer that would be Kami Kessler.
We have lots of people on the list, and we haven't quite decided exactly what that's gonna look like. Very picky at, you know, who we've talked to, and again, that's what they said, we feel this is a good fit for that particular area where the space cube is looking at, but we've had, I probably have five or six different names that we're kind of waiting to hear what's gonna happen on the sewer connections and stuff on the backside before we really could make any kind of decision on, you know, who to start working with.
Can you give us a sense of, are you, are these retail, or are these industrial?
We had a medical facility, what, calling in, unless we had residential housing wanting to go in there. One other one was, well, single-family houses versus flat-type houses. Actually, two of them, we've had residential come to us on. And we have, we don't have it listed, so to speak, you know, it's just word of mouth, what are you gonna do when they're calling? It's a letter of intent type thing. But right now, I, I really can't say which way we're going on that, it kind of just depends on what happens along that back line if we connect or not. There, that, you know, that goes in, or how much property is needed for that, to be really useful to put there.
Thank you.
I will caution you that we had a lot of trouble with MDOT, remember Tammy over the food bank? Cuz the runoff went to the MDOT property there, and it was
Yeah, and it, it took for a long time, we, we were paying taxes on that, you know, we owned that.
You didn't even own it.
Not sure how we got the tax bill on it if we didn't own it, but
But you did, yeah.
Just had the accessory.
I thought for twenty years or better.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's not my department.
MDOT is very difficult to deal with when it comes to stormwater runoff.
We worked with MDOT on Ultima seven for the St. John's facility, because our ultimate stormwater outlet is the MDOT right away ditch.
Oh. So you know what it's like?
I went through the courses there, for sure.
Yeah, they can be very, very challenging.
And it's, it's, as Dad gets older, he's eighty-five, and the zip code is still very valuable and needed with us kids, and, and if we're gonna develop and, you know, with this property moving, and, and have a tax law to come in, then we, we need to start moving on it, because it, we need his help, and
Help. And he's very, very good at what he does.
He sure is, he sure is.
So do you anticipate you'd be doing the site work for them?
Uh, we've discussed it, yes.
Good. All right, so just to, not to interject, but just to talk about process, so I think I might've mentioned it earlier, but concluding tonight's meeting, you know, we'll reach out to the developer, talk about some of the themes of the discussion tonight, and go over, you know, exactly what the township needs in terms of a full set of plans, kick out an agency review, conduct a zoning review here in-house, and then get that all compiled into a staff report and bring this back, and at that same meeting, schedule a notice of public hearing.
Yeah, complete the process. You're aware of the fact that we have some pretty strict lighting standards so far as keeping the light on the site?
Yeah, as I say, dark sky, or, it's
Yeah.
bigger township, very similar.
Yeah, similar.
Got the similar type of lighting, and sometimes it's a little bit, it's only downward, basically.
Yeah. That's the only comments I got, anybody else got anything else they'd like to ask, or comments they'd like to make? Now is the time to give them a little forewarning about what requirements are gonna be.
The only comment I have is, going back, it would be good to bring back the community input.
Yep, I think that's appropriate.
Are these drives gonna be one-way? I kinda looked at the distance between these, and you're talking about contractors coming in and out. They look kinda narrow, are they, did it intend that they'd be one-way drives?
Uh, we've got, right now it's laid out with twenty-four foot wide drive aisles, which accommodate two-way traffic.
Right.
We did end up striking St. John's to be one-way with thirty-foot aisles, which is pretty wide.
Yeah.
Which accommodates, if you have a tenant there using their unit and they're parked, you can accommodate traffic, which was a safety concern with the fire department as well, they still need access while people are using the property. Twenty-four feet would still accommodate that access.
Well, I think it depends on what the contractor's doing, he's liable to park right in the middle of the drive if he wants access to both sides of this truck.
Right.
And I assume you're gonna have to have fire hydrants in this facility some places.
I guess I would refer to the fire department, I believe there's coverage out front, as far as hydrant coverage. And then we'd have fire extinguishers onsite, for the building code, you know, which has spacing onsite, where they're accessible by everybody.
I don't remember, for East, uh, Lancing Stores, they didn't require any hydrants back in there, did they?
I don't, I can't speak to the fire department's review. Trying to think, they, I think?
Oh, wait a minute, they're on
Did they have water?
They're on water.
Yeah, that's, I think, I was just saying, I think they're on septic and well.
Yes, they are, that's right, they are. So they wouldn't have required hydrants.
Yeah, you can't.
Oh, hmm. That's interesting, cuz I know they did for the people on Chandler Road.
Obviously, the fire marshal, you know, they'll be conducting their review as a part of the agency review.
Right.
Do we need to mention this letter?
Uh, yeah, there was a letter received, it's been, if, um, this wasn't said earlier, a letter received by a concerned citizen related to this storage site in particular. Uh, the letter was provided to all the planning commission members that are present tonight. It's a long letter, it's pages, so I'm not gonna read it, but they're voicing their concerns. Yeah, of course, yeah.
Didn't you have a copy of it tonight, I think, can't wait?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they can take my copy, we've scanned in our copies. So, I'll give you it. Yeah, sorry, we didn't make extra copies, I didn't think about it.
Okay, if that's, everybody's happy with what we're doing here so far? Everybody's happy with what we're doing here so far, I mean, no further questions? All right, let's move on then. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Can I ask on the agenda, um, I mean, ask, um, those, uh, topics for Gary Lane, is that typical of our? I'm, I'm coming from the lake.
I don't think so.
I spent five days with my kids and grandkids and I was looking at my phone and I thought it was something that's.
No, but that was on the board's agenda last night, but I, I gotta follow up with you guys about, uh.
Okay.
Last night, it was an introduction to the board for Gary Lane.
There should be a copy of.
Is that supposed to work on the phone?
There should be a copy of the agenda right here on the podium though for you, if you want to take it with you.
But Kami, we, we have to follow up with you guys about it. We'll call you tomorrow.
Okay.
Was, is, is there one up there?
I don't think so. I think they're on that.
The developer wasn't required to be at the, um, introduction, but required to be at the next meeting.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Hope you have a great evening.
Thank you. All right, let me get back to the page here. All right, there we go. All right.
Whatever you want.
Okay, no, just wait, um, yeah, so the CIP introductions, uh, you might recall, we set a timeline, we amended the timeline for reasons. And we are at the point in the amended timeline where the CIP discretionary projects are back to be scored. A couple of points of note, DPW, partially due to staffing challenges are going on in the township right now. If, if people aren't aware, the, uh, DP, the department head for DPW is now the acting head of the fire departments. The interim acting fire chief. The foreman for DPW, which is Cody, I do not know his name. Okay, yes, thank you. Um, he is the interim acting director for DPW. The DPW department and, uh, the deputy superintendent, can you, can you kind of from the rec side of things, were hesitant to bring forward new projects to be scored because they wanted to wait out this, um, strategic plan. They felt like, we don't know what the plan is. They're just kicking all these community conversations off. We don't wanna submit something and then by the time it gets to the budget, they're wrapping up their strategic plan and now we're out of line. So that was kind of their thinking, obviously, I can see that logic to that. And, um, the only projects that were brought forward, projects that were already submitted and are to be rescored. We did do some, um, due diligence to see, you know, how, how, where, what year we're at in these projects being rescored. Obviously, if a project comes forward, it's scored and then picked up and implemented, it doesn't come back to be rescored. One such project would be all the locks and every, all the new lock technology and camera technology for the security of the township. That was a project that was discretionary scored, taken to the board, picked up, funded in the budget and implemented. Um, the other projects we had tonight, the multi, uh, sport court was submitted in twenty-twenty-two. So will be rescored if it's not picked up until twenty-twenty-seven. And all the other projects included tonight were submitted in twenty-twenty-three, so it'll be rescored until twenty-twenty-eight if not picked up.
Out of curiosity, I, how was the, the security system ranked in the scores relative to the other?
It ranked high. It ranked high. I'd have to look back, but just top of mind memory, I, if it wasn't ranked highest, it was among the highest. Um, I believe there was one that did rank higher, if my memory serves me correctly.
Could you repeat when the, uh, um, multi-use court?
In twenty-twenty-two was brought before the planning commission.
The next would be twenty.
And all the other ones in the packet tonight, which I think there are four of.
They rescored twenty-twenty-eight, but when do we, when are they, when, when's the rescore for the multi-use twenty-twenty-six?
Till twenty-twenty-seven. It's got five years, submitted for a five-year rolling basis. And then obviously the department head can say, hey, like, keep this one in the queue. Um, we probably, if they did that, we probably request on the planning department side that they update some of the materials because by that point the quote's like multi-years old. And when we put together our final report, if, uh, this body remembers from last year, we do an inflation calculator to take those numbers just based upon general inflation, but that's obviously a, a perfect method, method because inflation in different sectors is different. Um.
So can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So none of these projects are new, right?
Yes.
So these have been previously scored.
Yes.
And part of the rationale is that's, they didn't wanna touch these because of uncertainty related to the strategic plan.
They didn't wanna bring anything new forward, but yes.
So we have the same pressure, right?
Yes.
So what, why do, why would we even rescore them? Why don't we just submit our old scores and say, we're done?
That is perfectly fair and I think that would be within the ability of this body to do.
Makes sense to me.
Um.
Move to resubmit our old scores.
Well, we don't, you're not scoring anything tonight. We're just talking about the projects themselves, which I can do in rapid fire succession, if that's what you guys want me to do. Um, I, one thing I did discuss with the superintendent that I think is worth pointing out this meeting, but maybe we'll apply more to the next meeting, is you'll notice in the report, even though we're only, you guys are only scoring the discretionary projects. The non-discretionary, uh, projects are included in the report. And there's been no comments made, at least in my time, on that table that's in, included in the report in years past. That doesn't mean this body can't add comments to that, so.
On the non-discretionary.
On the non-discretionary. It's a report from this body to the board.
That's a provocative thing to tell us.
Something we're thinking about. Um, okay, so rapid fires, if you guys don't remember these, which again, that's why the department head isn't here. Uh, he is currently.
Putting out fires.
Doing fire things and making calls at midnight and he's like, hey, they've seen these for multiple years. If they have any questions, of course, have them send them to me and I'll get you answers. Okay, I'm not even gonna go through the details then, but, uh, this is the repavement of the parking lot. I think this one scored pretty high in years past. Um, obviously, I, I think even the chair was talking to me about how he's seen some of the soap washing out into the pour and play uh, area and a parking lot would help mitigate that, so that's one project. It'd be bathrooms, which the chair also reminded me that last night, that, um, the planning commission had pushed for alternatives in the past for this project, and I don't think any had been brought forward by the rec committee at this point. Um, if you'll remember, the reason, the rationale for that was they had more of what you're used to seeing at like a camp, uh, a state camping parking site where it's a, a formal building, but the bathroom itself, the waste goes into a tank which has to be pumped. Where their, this body's opinion was, there's sewer right there, man. Like, why don't we tie into that? So, and I think it just came down like money. Um, the boat launch, uh, you know, shoring up, uh, some of the aspects of the boat launch, improving the boat launch. And then with the boat launch, last year they were scored together, was the kayak launch. Um, so we did a boat slash kayak launch scoring, uh, because I think it was identified last year that that would help the seeking of grants, the kayak and the access to kayaking for people that were mobile limited, uh, would help fund the boat launch, which I thought was wise. I don't know if the rec department or rec committee had saw any grants for that. And then I think that's it. Unless I missed one.
Multi-sport.
Oh, yep, some of it, yep, you're right, uh.
You gotta have pickleball.
Yeah, and you guys remember that one.
Needs a broken wrist.
Yes. If you're breaking your wrist in pickleball, then you should be playing tennis.
My guy's fall. He can fall anytime, break your wrist.
All right, so chair, those are the projects. If anyone has any questions or wants more details, you don't necessarily have to get those to me tonight. You just fire off an email and I can get what the DPW uh, acting director, previous slash future director, get you some answers.
Whatever.
In, in reading through these, more technical point, anything else on the paving West Washington Park? They talk about the construction, that they're gonna put sand under the sidewalk, sand under there. Caution about using sand. It's, and if you've got washouts already here. If you've got a place where water's running next to a sidewalk, don't put sand under it, that sand won't be there long.
That's right.
So.
Yep.
Yep.
It'll wash right out from underneath the concrete.
Yep.
Yeah, the road commission on some of this sidewalk work because the earthwork wasn't getting done quick enough. Now they have to do double work. So, yeah, they're paying the price.
Yep.
Fair point.
Hope the road commission isn't paying the price. That should be on the contractor.
Yeah, sure. But they're, yeah, I'm just saying they're paying the price in terms of now they have to redo it, so it's double work.
Well, I think somebody ought to be taking some aggressive action to mitigate some of that water that's running off onto our pouring place at the playground. Because if anybody's been down there, and I made a couple of trips down there just to visualize, I think you stopped Miles and took a look at that.
We haven't stopped, but you told me about it yesterday. I wanna get out there.
There, we wouldn't have to redo the whole parking lot to mitigate the water problem.
They already re-landscaped to port some of that water away.
Well, if the, they did, it was not effective. James had a nice drawing with a, with a retention basin and stuff to be built there. They did not do any of that, so.
Yeah, you let me know about that last night. I was gonna, later this week, after we get through the, the earlier week is a busier period and later in the weeks. I was gonna grab the DPW director and see if you wanted to go out there.
Good plan. Thank you.
Maybe, maybe you could drag, maybe you could drag John with you.
That would be perfect. John, come meet us out there.
Yeah, well.
All right.
I'd have it fixed. It was up to me.
Okay.
Okay, do you wanna talk about vendor stands?
Yeah.
Miles and I had this little discussion and I suggested we bring it to the planning commission because I thought maybe we would have some innovative ideas about how to mitigate some of this problem. Well, go ahead, Miles.
Yeah, just ask the chair if we could kind of sample the room. This is another one of those ill-defined areas in the ordinance. Uh, it is a enforcement issue. It's a hard one to deal with. And, uh, it's, I can see arguments on both sides. And so I guess I, I want, all I'm seeking, I don't know if I'm necessarily seeking like saying, we need to get with legal and draft up a new ordinance on how to, uh, address these. Um, cause I don't know if they're actually a problem. That's where this discussion comes in.
You just said two things, that there's an enforcement issue, but you're not sure if there's a problem.
Well, there's, well, there's only.
There's a problem. We just don't know.
We're looking for a solution, but we don't know if there's a problem.
Well, there is a problem. We just don't know how to address it.
The problem and the enforcement problem is we don't know if and, I feel like right now, we, we don't know if we can enforce and the if is if we should enforce. So that's a problem. It's just kind of like a conundrum. It's not necessarily like, we have a big issue and like people are gonna, like, it's a safety concern. That doesn't seem, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say that in my experience with the farmer's market, um, any vendor selling food items has to follow the Michigan cottage food laws.
Correct.
And that is enforced by the health department. Um, the inspector did come to the market last year. I understand in my discussion with him that it is a complaint-based process that the inspector typically isn't going to show up unless somebody has submitted a complaint about a particular vendor or the products that they're selling. That seems to drive there, from my understanding in the one conversation that I had, that was sort of the driver for that inspector being at the farmer's market last year. Um, so I, I think it would maybe be to our benefit to have a registry. I don't know if, if permit is really necessary, but again, there's gonna be some costs in creating this, which permits offset, as we've discussed earlier, um, mainly for the process of in, the inspection.
So.
Arm of this.
Our kind of, let me explain like our issue. Our issue is, before we dive too deep in that. So our issue isn't like, oh, there's baggers or these like safe to eat. Like, that's just not our department. Like, we, I guess, like, I'm not saying we don't care, but it's definitely not like, we won't see that as our problem. The perceived perhaps problem, I'm really trying to be careful with this problem language now, um, is in, in the enforcement of the zoning ordinance, we have to identify a structure, right? The, that word structure is really important. Um.
Is it, is, are you describing what we have in place now?
What we have in place now.
Okay.
That word structure is really important. And it would seem easy to define what a structure is and what a structure is not, but it actually can get quite complex. And, uh, how the zoning administrator prior to me, Bert Gale, um, sometimes would talk about this. Now, there are, in, in case law, there's certain items like AC units, not allowed to be viewed as a structure. So like that one's just clear. Like, nope, that's not a structure that AC units don't have anything to do with. You're encroaching on the side yard setback for AC units. There's also a carve-out in the building code for, uh, some of those larger egress windows. They now have to have a concrete enclosure with a little ladder seeing out. That concrete enclosure is not a, cannot be by state law, a zoned item, cause it's required by the building code. So there's little things like that, right? That make it more, a little bit more complex. There's a nuance there. Bert Gale typically would say if something is easily movable, but maybe for, um, reasons, easily movable wasn't even defined because easily movable is subjective, right? What's easily movable for one person may not be, and then like, does that include using equipment to easily move it, you know? So it's a little subjective, but I think it's one of those things, well, you know a structure when you see one. But, so these pictures I like because are these structures and are, are these easily movable? I think it, because of their size and their weight, uh, it could be argued either way. Now, if these are structures in the township, then they need a zoning permit because they fall under two hundred square feet and they do not require a building permit. Where these vendor stands are typically placed is at the edge of the property. So they would, almost every single one that currently exists in Bath Township are, would be in violation of their front yard setback. And thus we would, and they would incur enforcement from us, uh, asking them to get out of the front yard setback.
Which is?
Depends on the district, but in the rural district, it's fifty feet, uh, and I think our smallest front yard setback is twenty-five feet. So even at the most gracious front yard setback, twenty-five feet from the road might be like, yeah, cause some of the houses are grandfathered. It might be in their backyard, you know, uh, so it's just not doing them any good. The other thing is, these are probably on that, in terms of weight, are on the heavier end of what we've seen out in Bath Township. I'm thinking about one on Center Road, which I absolutely don't think I could make a good legal argument to say that is a permanent structure cause it's literally a, a foldable table and an event tent. You know, like, that's not a struc, that's not a structure. If that's a structure, like, none of us can ever camp ever. Um.
What about a hay wagon? Would be much larger, same building materials.
A hay wagon, because it has wheels, is most certainly not a structure.
Right. So as long as that thing had little wheels that you could lift one end up and drag it around, that would not be a structure.
Kind of looks like the white one does have little wheels.
It does have little wheels.
So what I like about the, the left photos, it says farm stand. And the reason is that, and I'm, I'm drawing on really murky memories, I think there's state law that protects farm stands in particular.
That would be something interesting to look into.
Um, that's, you know, they're outside of our jurisdiction.
That'd be great.
Another, another question I have with these things here, okay, they're selling products that they are producing on their property.
Uh, presumably. I mean, we don't know that for sure.
I don't know.
But how does a home business fit into this thing? Do they have to have a home business to have one of these?
Well, and that, that's what I'm talking, so we do have a home business, but I would think that our barrier to entry, cause remember, we set standards where you have to trip a certain amount of things to get in a home business. I just don't feel like you're gonna get there with this.
In the cottage food law, you don't have to. If you are, uh, there's some categories of things that you can make. It has to be things that don't require refrigeration.
Right.
Um, and then that means that you're, you can have a home business, but you aren't subject to having to go through the inspection process through the health department in your home. They can inspect your stand and they can inspect your booth at the farmer's market, but they don't, you aren't required to have them come to your house and inspect them. So you're not required to have a business. I think the IRS might disagree with that.
Well, the six hundred dollar payments, you know, they're really in the after.
Right. Right. I mean, you're, you legally, you're required to report your income, but you can just, you don't have to do it through a business. Right. I mean, you're, legally you're required to report your income, but you can just, you don't have to do it through a business.
Well, there's another problem that came up when Miles and I first started talking about this. Because if you drive Round Lake Road on the weekends, which I quite often do, there's a number of people that have these on Round Lake Road. But they have tape up and they have posts up that they don't want people to drive on their lawn. So people stop on the road and then they go to the farm stand and they talk or whatever. And they create a real traffic problem.
I again though, don't know like if, that's, that is like traffic and car congestion and the possibility of accidents is the concern here. Again, this is why I just want to talk about this. I don't know if that's an uh, issue that's best solved though via planning. I don't know if like the responsibility is like for the police to, so like, no, you can't park here. Like that's a ticket.
I would, I would agree with you that.
So are you asking this body to shut down like old lady McMillan? Like entrepreneurial, like adolescent teen, you know, wanting to sell some, you know, craft-made goods.
No, I guess we're asking, cause we do, we get all kinds of phone calls in the planning department. Some are just like unhinged sometimes or yeah, no. You know, and then some are like this, we're like, hey, I don't really know what to do, but like there's a lot, like is this within you guys' scope? And then we take a look at it. We're like, we're not sure if that's in our scope. But I think there is this industry, and uh, what's the word I'm looking for? This like entrepreneurial spirit in Bath Township that I think is worth um, honing and supporting. And so I wouldn't want to go down that path. I guess what we were looking for is just putting our heads together and helping us understand this issue and where you guys are at with it, cause we don't want to make decisions in a vacuum, of course. But even, I mean, your mention of like a state law that covers farmer stands, I mean, that's something good to look into.
Is there like some sort of like best practices? Like your farm stand should allow for a car to be parked there safely off the road. Your farm stand must follow the cottage food law from the state of Michigan. Your farm stand shouldn't compete with the local farmer's market on Thursdays.
This would be something we could put out in the newsletter, for instance?
Or handout in.
Or handout to the people that do it. And maybe it does come with a flyer that says, please join our farmer's market.
Right. Or register your stand or something. I don't know. Something like that.
Yeah.
So our, our current master plan, comprehensive plan, I think the spirit of it is fully embracing of this type of uh, use. Because we talked specifically about, you know, food production, local food production and removing barriers to that. And, and this is in alignment with people seeking locally sourced food to, you know, for their own health and wellbeing, as opposed to needing to go out to Meyer or travel or, you know, creating a greater carbon footprint.
Right. Or just offering something in community, like you got an abundance of green peppers this year. So you throw them out on a table by the road so that you're not just chucking them in your compost bin or, um.
Maple syrup.
But even these statements from you guys like, and that is the feedback we're looking for is exactly what you just said. Because that helps us when that phone call does come in like, oh no, this actually was an item discussed at the planning commission. It was determined that these are in line with our currently adopted comprehensive plan. It gives me the tools in our toolbox to answer the question.
I, I, I do agree with you though about the traffic. So I have had several times where people slow down to see what's there. Think they're gonna pull in and they don't pull in. And then there's really already someone there. So then they're like, where do I go? And there's nearly like no direction for them. And I'm like, ah, come on.
Yeah, I just don't know if that's an issue where like, if you're stopping in the middle of a fifty-five mile an hour road, like that's a ticket.
If I hit them, it's gonna be my fault anyways.
Yeah, I think that's another thing is, what roads are we talking about here? Cause you, if you're on Chandler Road, it's different than if you're on Club Course Drive.
Well, the roads that we currently see them on are Northern Chandler, uh, mid-center road in the township and Old M seventy-eight, or no, it's Coleman. Where Coleman goes off of Old M seventy-eight.
Yeah, I would love to see someone on Club Course Drive set up a farm stand. Be having a meeting about that.
We don't even allow sheds.
I mean, the traffic thing, that's a police issue, right? And so that can be a complaint made about traffic hazards and stuff like that. So I would say, argue that's somewhat out of our purview. I mean, it, it doesn't have to be within our purview. We can just ship it to the police.
I suspect that this is a problem all over in the state of Michigan. And I kind of wonder M-DAR hasn't already addressed this in some way with a brochure or a pamphlet.
Oh, like the Michigan Township Association?
Yeah. I think I would pursue that.
Okay. Best practices, but yeah, we can follow up with that.
So, so going to the question about is that a structure versus not structure and if it's movable? I mean, I think that is dependent upon I, the, the homeowners, right? And so I got forklift attachments for my tractor. I can move a pretty large structure.
I agree, it's probably case dependent though too, because like when does this become a shed? There's probably a fine line in there.
I mean, and then I think there's, you know, is it up year-round versus is it only up seasonally?
That's a good point too. So maybe the three that we're aware of, and see if they come down in the winter.
One of them's a multi-use unit for like a bus stop, bus stop with a little delivery box.
Yeah, and the bus stop will be tough. This is the stuff you get into though, when you actually try to administer an ordinance. It's one thing to talk about and then some weird stuff happens and makes you view it differently.
Well, there's no use in making a rule if you can't enforce it.
Yeah.
Well, I just did a quick look up of the rules there. And so like roadside stands or if they're selling farm grown or anything that falls under M-DAR, there, there, there's no regulations on that except for the cottage law like you stated. So the other part is if a township or county generally be a township or city, wanted to invoke an ordinance, they could do that. But from what I can see, there's nothing under.
So the state isn't calling for it to be regulated, but they're not, they're not superseding our local control like a mobile home park.
So the only competing issue would maybe be with M-DAR though.
Okay.
So, that, that's real quick look up.
Well, no, I appreciate, um, we'll look, we'll do a double check too, just to make sure there's not some state law. Cause I could see something under that Michigan Agricultural Act.
Yes.
Preventing us from local control.
But if they weren't selling fruits or vegetables or something grown, then it definitely could be in an ordinance.
Sure.
That's what I see.
Frequently you talk about being overwhelmed with work and not having enough staff. Is this worthy of township staff time dedicating to this? In, in as much as it's gonna solve a problem that is of high priority? I mean, my read is that there's not a whole lot of appetite to touch.
No, I don't, I don't think so. I think where we're at with it is get some Brex practices, make a flyer, get the farmer's market flyer, staple it together, hand it out to these people when we get a call. And that's kind of where I'm at right now.
You could do something like a guidance document.
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily have to be a rule. You just be like, hey, here's some best practices.
Sounds like a great project for an intern.
Workshop on creating mobile farm stands.
We could do that.
Well, I think it's good to, it can be beneficial to the farmer's market.
Well, what about our little food pantries? Is that different in concept?
The libraries. That's why you get into some nuance. That's why the, why I said, I went off with the structure is harder to find.
I mean, that's fixed to the ground, but like.
Yeah, it's on the ground.
Is it commercial or residential though?
Years ago, we had a commissioner.
These are generally related to residential or bond type properties, not a commercial.
They wanted to pass an ordinance about the little book, uh, things where leave a book, take a book that people put up.
Oh, they had those in Duett Township.
We had them in Bath Township.
Yeah, but he wanted an ordinance about it. Regulator.
The, the problem, the one I see in Duett Township is on Web Road. And if somebody stops there, they're gonna be, they're gonna be in the road. There's no place to stop.
Um, okay. Well, I think I got, I appreciate the time to have the discussion shared. I think I got what I need to move on.
I think we should move on, Miles. Let's talk about the survey input from the Gilbert and Lewis.
Yeah, before um, I lead into the main point of tonight, the chair brought up a good point. And so me and him have been discussing timelines, but I, since not everybody's aware. So the idea I think we both came to here was speak with you guys tonight. Get some high level input on information that this body feels important is to be gained from the survey, not necessarily. We don't, what we're not looking for is, I want the question to say these words, just what information is important to this body. Then I have talked with the Gifford Webster staff. They believe, uh, we'll, we'll work tonight to get your input. Catalog it, get it to them, maybe even send them this part of the video. And um, they said they will be able to get the survey wrapped up by the fourteenth. To that end, in an effort to not um, delay and get things rolling and to live up to what we were saying with the second uh, meeting a month. And if we, um, you know, will have enough people available to at least have a forum, but even if we don't, we could still have discussion. Um, un-cancel the meeting on the twenty-second. And the only item on the agenda would be reviewing the survey questions for input from the planning commission to provide back to Gifford Webster.
Do you need a motion or anything for that?
If we want to un-cancel the meeting, if that's something this body wants to do, which it seemed like the chair was in favor of that. And I second that it's a good idea and will help things move along quickly. We would need a motion to un-cancel.
Well, let's, let's wait on the cancel thing, the meeting or un-cancel, until we get a chance to talk about what kind of information do we want? Because I think part of that meeting should also be, how many of us are willing to go out in the community to work with the community to do surveys? Because I personally don't think we've got the money to pay Gifford and Webster to do twenty meetings.
No, we definitely don't. I mean, that's definitely not in our contract with them. Um, it was always an intention, there will be a couple of larger events or township staff and Gifford staff will set up a table and both of us will be at that table. There will also be smaller events where it'll be me and one of the interns or me and both of the interns at said event working a table and then providing our results to them. And then obviously Gifford Webster staff managing the website, helping us with social media posts to just drag net, get as many people as we can. So we, we, we do have a plan in place for that. I don't know if we'll get to twenty events. I think we'll get to more than, you know, three.
I hope we get to at least ten or twelve.
Yeah, I think tens are probably reasonable number.
Between now and when?
I think we'll probably have, that hasn't fully been worked out. That's another thing Gifford and Webster are working on is the overarching timeline, given our goals. Uh, I don't think we want to s- January is our like drop dead date, January twenty-twenty-seven. We'll probably set a goal a couple of months out from that to give ourselves a little bit of a buffer. But that gives us a healthy amount of time for survey input. I mean, we're talking three, four months.
Okay.
Is there a discussion about the length of the survey and?
No, that's, no, that would be good input for tonight.
That's one of the things we want to talk about tonight.
And then we're talking an online survey?
Uh, it will, we will have paper copies, you know, for certain demographics, but yeah, it'll be hosted online.
Do we have our last survey that we put out for the last plan?
Well, the last one was a non-motorized one, so we have that, yeah. This one will be more broad and encompassing, obviously.
This is just for the planning, not the strategic plan?
Just for comp.
How will this be different than what happened last week?
Uh, there will be similarities. Obviously what happened last week, uh, to Jason, or Commissioner Amory's point just now. Um, obviously we had, uh, you know, we were talking about the comp plan and their strategic plan. And there was some crossover, but really that conversation last night helped, is helping the Gifford staff draft the questions right now. Cause like, okay, these are the things that came up. This is what's important to people. So will tonight, like if something that didn't come at that meeting, but you felt like was important? Like now is the time to say like, for example, for me, I want to know what people think about the housing supply in Bath Township. Do we have too much? Do we not have enough? Do they want different types of housing? Like those would be questions that would be important to me.
Right.
So with that being said, um.
Who do you want to do the brainstorming?
You want to go person by person? Maybe just go down the line?
What's, I don't, I don't know that.
However, you guys want to do it, just.
What, what kind of, what kind of stuff do you already have envisioned? So we're not.
Uh, well, obviously the, one of the reasons we got the grant is housing. So we're going to have to, there are gonna have to be some questions that cover housing.
Housing supply.
Some of the other stuff that came up during the meeting that would probably be worth asking this, members of the community. It would be, how do they feel about recreational on-street, uh, non-motorized biking? Um, you know, that's something that happens a lot in Bath Township and there's certain feelings about that. And there's a funding element to that too. If that's something you want to support, that takes money to support.
There was also a discussion on the trails and parks, right? Was that, was that brought up? Were there any questions about that?
I do, that's why.
I do feel like we have a lot of data about that though. We have that whole, I mean, I have it in the drawer here, the whole report on.
Fair point. So, okay, so we can take a note that maybe data on trails aren't as important. Cause you do want to keep the survey to a limit.
Important, but I think we have it.
Sure. It's just not a priority for this survey.
Yeah.
We need to define what we mean by trails, what we mean by on-road bike. Because the town I was sitting at, there was no, when we started talking about trails, they said, we got all kinds of trails in Township.
Paved trails.
Well, I'm not talking about paved. I'm talking about transportation. Trails are great in parks. They're needed, so just for recreation. But there is certain population like Dwight Washington that uses his bike to get from eight point A to point B. For a long time. There's a lot, other people feel like that too. There's no safe way on a lot of these roads, Webster, Chandler, Clark.
Yeah, the shoulders are.
There's one safe way to ride your bike on those streets.
That's correct.
Okay, so on.
And that's one thing we need.
So on, so on-street bike, bicycle transit is a question that you would like to hear about?
Yep, definitely.
Okay.
Which is weird, cause for my whole life, we've ridden on the roads with the cars with no bike lanes, you know?
Yeah.
And no helmets or anything else.
If I wore a helmet, I would need to have it so that people would throw rocks at me.
I'm a, I'm a.
Of course, when you, when you, when you were younger, there was, there were no cars, so.
Yeah, cars are moving quicker these days. Bicycles on roads is also for whatever reason, sometimes become a controversial thing where certain car owners will be like, what are they doing on the road?
Yep.
And so that's unfortunate, yes.
And, and there are certain bicycles that don't ride the way they should be either.
Sure, there's education needed on both sides.
You see a group of bicycles riding, they're riding three abreast on the road.
Yeah. Um, alright, so what else? So bike, on-street bicycle. That's important.
What about future development of the township itself? Like the, how do people feel about, like you're running out of space here?
Yeah.
Expanding the, like a new facility.
Perception of development.
Township itself.
Like if we built a new township across the road, traded all our properties and bought that property there, built a big township hall, we could rent out conference rooms. This could become the senior center. That could become the library. That, you know, I mean, I'm just spewing, spewing stuff.
But questions around future development?
Future development of a, of a township infrastructure, I guess.
Of township facilities?
Facilities, maybe?
I don't know if that, do you think that's, that's more strategic plan driven than, I think it'll be comp plan.
Yes.
Future development, I think is a good one. How do you feel about the growth of the township?
Where should it be occurring and what kind of development?
Yeah, I think that's important.
Tonight's meeting, because do you, do you really want a bunch of warehouses down here on Webster Road?
Should this development, we have to, what kind of development is important to you?
Many years ago by Spicer groups.
So growth of township and type of development, is that what you put?
Yeah, we're making quick sub-notes here of where would you like to see development? What kind of development is important to you?
Shall we ask about?
I think we should separate, excuse me, I'm sorry, commercial and residential.
Well, we'll ask them what type of development. We'll give them a bunch of options and obviously you fill in the blank if you have.
What type of, where should it go? On, on Webster Road or on Clark Road? What kind of development should happen on that road?
Yep. We can give a map in the survey land and drop a pen.
What we're talking about is where do we want, downtown, or you know, coffee, go through most of these small communities like Leslie and places like that. They actually have a four corners that has businesses on it. Bath doesn't have anything like that. It's like, at the, at the meeting, there was, some people in the meeting that didn't understand that Myers is in Bath Township.
It's a common thing.
That whole thing up there.
Yeah, I think it just goes along with the idea of school district lines define an area versus township boundaries defining an area. Why once upon a time they couldn't be the same, I don't know. But I think that that's where that comes from. Why, once upon a time, they couldn't be the same, I don't know, but I think that that's where that comes from. People think it's Haslett.
What about, what about a survey question that says something, because this came up on Monday's meeting, it's something that we've talked about a lot here. But something that says, what is your perception for um Bath Township's sense of identity? Do we have a good sense of identity? Do we have a median sense of identity? Do we have a poor sense of identity?
I think you can get there through a different type of question. So I'd say. Describe what Bath means to you. And you can code that data for sense of identity based on how specific or vague the answers are. Um, but you, you do double duty. You get the actual what are people's identities. Now, the, the consultant should be able to finagle the wording of that kind of question.
I also think we kind of want to know, like, how regulated do we want everything to be? Like, as we grow, do we want to regulate where all the parking should be, what all the lights should look like? Uh, what types of trees you can plant? I mean, there certainly are some communities that have really done that.
Terms of a question, uh, like how important are development standards to you? How important are regulatory standards to you for this community?
Something that sounds less plannery.
You gotta be careful about that, because you gotta qualify where the person resides. Person that lives down along Chandler Crossing.
Yeah, this is what's hard to do in a survey, right?
A lot of different attitude than somebody that lives out where I do or Kate does.
Well, on a, there will be demographic questions.
But I think that that's kind of gets to the heart of, like, the storage moratorium, is we're gonna grow and, and. How much do we regulate that growth versus trying to balance the need to get some more tax revenue into our pockets? So that we can do some of the things that people want us to do that would help us grow, like putting in the pickleball courts or the Park Lake Trail. Or the sidewalks or these kinds of things, like you can't do that without getting the money to do that. And you can't get the money if you don't allow this growth to happen, or if you really restrict who can come in. I know, it is, and, and it's finding that, that right balance, I think.
Put that in a question, though.
Can I just add into that, the moratorium was a tool, it wasn't a thing in and of itself. It was a tool to give us time so that we can accommodate residents' preferences for what's developed over there. And so the board effectively removed that tool from our toolbox, now we have this in front of us. There's gonna be zero people in Bath that will support a self-storage facility. I mean, maybe abstractly as, well, it's bringing tax revenue in. Well, I, I don't, I mean, I don't know enough about taxes to know if a self-storage faci- facility. Uh, generates equal amount of taxes as a retail business, certainly not sales tax and all that kind of stuff.
But we don't get the sales tax here in Bath Township.
Generate any employment, that's what.
The, the larger issue is that it's gonna generate far le- as they said, far less traffic, which is going to, when. Other retail businesses is what residents want. Do their assessment of how much traffic is coming through here, they're gonna say, oh, well, there's this big, you know, empty space here that's self-storage. This might not be a great place for a McDonald's or Taco Bell or whatever people want. And so, so I mean.
Texas Roadhouse.
I, I do want to get back though to the, because Kate's got an interesting point, like, and this has been a classic dilemma in Bath, you guys do, is an interesting community. Uh, because you do have this more like suburbanizing south. But then like a rural north and we're trying to balance something there, it's not easy to do. Um, those populations demand different things of their government, yet they only have one government, so like it has to meet the needs and wants of both the best it can. I'm trying to, I'm struggling, I want to put that into a question. How regulated do you want to be? People want to be, I want to be regulated though, you know, like it's, but you can't leave the question too much.
Well, one thing that I kind of liked that they did in their online survey is they did some, like, drag around ranking. You know, what, what would be your ideal community? One where all the lampposts look the same and all the street signs look the same. Versus one that sort of grows organically as businesses take interest in the area. Versus one that is, I, if there was sort of a way you could rank those descriptions, maybe? I don't know how else you could do that. You could even do some. Compare some communities around us. I mean, you could certainly think of different communities that fall into those categories and you could use those as specific examples. What should Ba- Bath Township look like as we model our growth? Should it look like Williamson? Should it look like Oakhamas? Should it look like?
You can work backwards. I like that question a lot, because if the answer is, we want to look like Mason, then it's like, okay, well, these are the tools Mason's using to achieve that look. If it's, we want to look like Langsberg, well, that's a different set of tools.
I did a lot of surveys that are, give you ten choices, it's, uh, pick the top three and rank them one, two, three.
So, I like that. I think that can be informative, even if in, in terms of regulation, that's not informative, it's informative in the sense of like. Because what is the comp plan at the end of the day, it's, it's providing a direction. And if the direction is Langsberg and not Williamson, that's worth noting.
Every single one of those communities has a centralized downtown.
I think that's always a goal.
Well, maybe our centralized downtown.
It's gonna be full of self-storage facilities, so I don't.
What were you gonna say about Haslett?
Uh, yeah, that's true, Haslett doesn't, Oakhamas doesn't.
But this Haslett doesn't even have any governing body other than just Meridian Township.
But that doesn't mean anything to the layperson. For me, it would still be informative if people are picking Haslett.
Yeah, Haslett over the school districts, that's what they are.
They do give me the sense of a location in my mind, you know, if I think of Haslett, I'm thinking of Marsh Road and. Has had very weird, unregulated growth over the last thirty years.
Now they've got that great big vacant parcel down there.
But forty years ago, that was where all the businesses were.
Yeah, ebbs and flows.
Yeah, because downtown Oakhamas doesn't exist anymore either. They tore that all down.
It's for sale now.
Great plans for it.
Well, okay, so that, that was our goal. What else we got?
Could we provide kind of a segmented map of the township and ask, what would you like to see? This to look like?
Yeah, in the next ten.
Well, I think that's what we're, that question, that was kind of my thought for that question of like.
Growth in the township?
Well, what the Chair Reich's point of, what kind of development would you like to see? Well, I think you should leave, where would you like to see development? Have a map, they click, and then once they've got that point on the map. That the second auto-generated question is, what type of development would you like to see here? That helps answer that.
Yeah, but I think you gotta give them choices, you can't give them all.
We'll give them, we'll give them, yep, there will be some choices and then we'll of course include other, right? Because people can be creative and come up with something we didn't think about.
Another question I'd, I'd like to have addressed is parks in the community. Cause at the table I was, I'd say, we've got, we've got five great parks. And it, it includes a soccer field as a park, well, that's open away. But Whistwasser and the one down there, there were two parks, and I said, how many people in this township, which parks do they use? Do they use parks? Because I'm thinking.
The question would be, what parks do you use? And then if the answer is yes, it auto generates the full question, which is what parks?
But also, do we need more parks? My personal opinion is we do. There are no pocket parks, there is no place for a community. Kids to get together and, and, I mean, a lot of places have.
Alright, so how many questions are we talking, because that's a lot of questions.
I did just talk to somebody about what we discussed at the table the other night. And um, they said, we have, someone said to me, my, my problem with that is, we have parks. We have a lot of parks, but yet, nobody knows about them. So, there would be, why we, why do we want to make more parks when we're not using the parks that we have? Like the Robinson Road Park that's not used, it's a very nice little park. Why do we need to make another Robinson Road Park when we have Robinson Road Park? That's what I'm trying to understand.
There needs to be some kind of a, an area that goes with each park. The Robinson, I don't even know where the Robinson Road Park is, but.
But you're saying some connectivity of some sort, is that what you're saying?
Either the park is gonna be big enough to drop people from the entire township, or it's gonna be small enough to service a neighborhood.
I see what you're saying. So like a city park, it would have a.
I think within the context of, remember, length is always like a thing. So I think within the context of the comp plan, like there is a parks and rec plan, and that can have much detail about parks. So in the context of the comp plan, you could probably get one question about parks. So if you could only get one, what would that question be?
Which parks do you use?
I would do it a, a ranking of what, how, what is most valuable to you and then have parks, like a list of different things.
Like a list of land uses and parks is one of those land uses.
Should we ask a question about alternative energy, solar panels, wind turbines?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's worth asking.
That's so in two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah, there are, but there's not the money for it these days for sure. But are you talking in terms of like residential? Cause that's something that has been.
Are you talking about? Utility scale?
If you talk about utility scale, I mean, I think that's less, this is a twenty-year plan, um, we could have a different administration in next. Um, that views it more favorably, the money for utility scale renewable energies is not looking great.
So going to George's comment about communicate, I mean, communication, so this is one of those areas, like, you know. Communication falls under the strategic plan, right? But signage falls under.
I think signage does, community signage to me does fall under the comp plan, because it's a zoning matter.
So maybe there's a question of like, do you know, are, are you, do you know how to navigate? Uh, that's a terrible question.
Wayfinding is a buzz term, but that is very to case point, planner-ish, like, I think if I ask people, how do you feel about Bath Township's wayfinding?
Well, I went around the other day, we.
But I think it's worth asking.
We went through the neighborhood, it's just west of Marsh, east, east of Marsh, yeah, east of Marsh Road, in that neighborhood. Think, where does it go? We got to Perry Road and turned right down to the lake, there's a great big sign, entering Meridian Township. So we turned around and came back. There's no sign that says entering Bath Township. They have no idea what.
So how do we put that into a question though? Cause it's something that we've talked about a lot. I think wayfinding is important. I, I'm trying to think about how to put it into a question.
Does it really need to be asked because we know that we need way sign?
Yeah, but it gives us, I think it does need to be asked, because then it gives the board the ability to be like, everyone thinks this is important. This needs to be funded.
Right, it has been mentioned a few times, it's never gone anywhere, so.
It could, it's just a tool in the toolbox, but how do you put that into a question, like?
Do you want your signage to be like another community maybe? Cause I was, I was, I'm, I probably could wait till, till.
You could just ask, like, how would you rank? The signage designating Bath, the areas of Bath Township and then like, uh, zero to five. Terrible to adequate.
Zero being terrible, five being perfectly adequate.
Where would you put the signs?
That's, yeah, I think you get way too in the year, that, that's your two hundred weeks, you gotta keep it more broad. And you only got limited questions, because you get into where would you put the sign?
Yeah, signing, denoting.
Again, the problem is people don't know where Bath is.
Bath Township's boundaries and points of interest.
Well, the survey nerds for the company will.
You know, earlier we asked a question about what residents of Bath's opinion of, of Bath Township. I don't see a question to find out, what do they think, people who don't live in Bath, what their opinion of Bath Township is. My, my wife works in Duett, I'm living in Bath now, but.
Perception is important.
Schools and stuff, and the client she has, they'd say, where do you live? Bath Township, oh. That's the impression that people have about Bath Township in general.
Not all people.
I think it's just, it's just a general piece of general.
Perception of a community can be important, so you could phrase it, what do you believe the perception of Bath Township is? And then give some options.
Well, and also I think a lot of that gets connected to the school district, which is not in our control.
That's true though, I do defer to Commissioner Amorim's point, like, I think perception is important and I think we need to work on our perception. I think that's already known. It's like, if you get that data, what do you, what do you do with it? Like, okay, well, people think Bath Township is this, like, I don't really know how to take that.
Well, you should show her that data that has the housing market prices versus Duett. That might change their perception.
Good place to invest, I'm counting on that.
I think a lot of that's too, that we don't have a downtown or that it's pretty old.
Although we still have two downtown signs, was ever mugging for a long time to get this damn thing taken down. We're directing people to go downtown where there is nothing.
The DDA district signs fully removed now that we've dis- already been district and spent all the money.
We still have seven grand.
Oh, I thought it was all gone.
It should be this year, yeah, we got, we got a couple of last little sidewalk things that we saved before. International tuba factory, whatever. Okay, so this is, this has all been good, um, anything else?
What do we do about downtown? I mean, there's a question that during the, um. The second part of this meeting, and he had a list of things. One was ordinance enforcement, code enforcement. Construction code enforcement.
Yeah, we, we talked to him about that, because that was kind of like misstated.
Yeah, it was.
We do have construction code enforcement, that is a service that taxpayers pay for in Bath Township, that's what the building official does, but we also have ordinance enforcement. Which is a different service that was not listed.
That's the question that I had. Meeting and stuff, because, and, and, and to me, there must be something in our ordinances somehow. About some of those structures in downtown. That shouldn't be allowed. Blankets over the windows and stuff, what are the living conditions for the people living there?
No, for sure, so. Code enforcement is something that.
Are those rental properties or are those people living there?
Code enforcement is something that's important to me, obviously, and I know there is varying opinions on that in the township. I think that gets back to Kate's kind of overarching point of like, well, how regulated do we want to be? That's something that's been dynamic and debated in the township. But, um. I, I don't, I think that probably is a question that's worth asking data, because there can be an output from that question, which is. How do you feel about the township's enforcement of its ordinances on a scale of one to ten or whatever?
Yeah, I like it when everyone else gets enforced, but I don't like it when I do.
Yeah, but if, but if the answer to that, and of course, that's how everybody feels, but if the answer to that is one. Or, you know, zero being it's terrible and ten being it's great and a hundred something people respond and we're getting a bunch of twos, we got a problem.
Yeah, I think that does provide the data to inspire a change of.
Attitude, in terms of policy. Even policy within township staff, you know.
So, we have a blight organ- ordinance, right? Yeah, so that's not being enforced on some properties apparently.
But what the problem is, we're also complaint driven, so if we don't get a complaint, then there's nothing to enforce.
You don't have to be, though.
It doesn't have to be, no, but that's where data saying the ordinances are not enforced is helpful, because it, oh, well, maybe we. This is something that people are talking about, maybe we need to change that policy. But that, that is common, I'll even say, I, I was just speaking to somebody out, just outside of this township today. Some of you might be aware, if you drive on Clark Road, there is a residential home just outside of Bath Township. They built a big blue pole barn north side of Clark, um, they've got a lot of stuff in the yard, uh, it's growing. Um, every month it seems like there's more, and it was going on for a while and, you know, nothing from Duett Township, which is usually seen as a more highly. Regulated and enforced community than Bath Township. They, a complaint was received and now they're moving forward with enforcement, but they waited till they got a complaint.
Is that the way, it's just built up big blue?
Yeah.
What was the complaint based on?
Uh, just the junk and trash in the front yard.
Town-based business.
Blight issue.
It's a blight issue, yeah.
Haven't even been in that house that long, it just sold. Haven't even been in that house that long. It just sold last spring. Well, maybe a year ago.
Yeah. Blight can come on fast with the right homeowner.
Do you have to be a resident to make a complaint?
No. And they can be anonymous.
Okay.
Are you the code enforcement official?
I'm not. I was helping for a period of time when we were between officials, but I think we have backup. It is Roger Dunham. Prior to him, it was Kevin Douglas. And I think Roger's doing a good job in trying to fix some of the, it, the fall, I would say, fall up issues. It's like the initial contact was always made, but then the follow up was the, where things fell through.
So we have no rental, um, ordinances, like you have to register a rental property, anything like that, right?
No. That's something that's been taken the board in the past, but it wasn't received well. We are currently working, actually me and Ally were talking about it today. She's helping me do the preliminary research for a more commercial rental ordinance, which is something we were, are working on in the background. Our target is, you know, a rental property that's fifty units or larger, but that's really to help us get tools in our toolbox for Chandler Road, not the mom and pop, you know?
Well, could you, uh, in the master plan include like an area that, um, had, you know, carve out an area like?
Yeah, you could always say there are rental standards within these districts.
Right. And maybe that would be useful for downtown.
I don't even think you would have to.
If there are rental properties down there.
Yeah.
That are causing issues.
No, that would be something. Yeah, cause right now really the only, um, real tool in the township's toolbox is the danger structure. Um, laws within the state building code. The fall through there recently with the township is we haven't had a danger structure officer. You have to have the officer to have a danger structure hearing before you can get a court order to have the danger structure removed. The township is currently in the, uh, process of recruiting a danger structure officer and it has been challenging for us. We, I think we've reached out to five individuals and we keep, oh yeah, I could do it, but then I don't wanna do it. And then we go to the next person. And so it's taking us longer than we thought it would.
Well, like, like blight, that's also somewhat subjective.
It is, and that's why you have to hold a dangerous hearing.
Problem. And if somebody doesn't wanna comply, then it can go, have to go to court.
And there are clear guidelines in what, yeah, I would say most of the time it's going to end up in court. There are clear guidelines on. Even the barriers to entry to get to the danger structure. I'm one of the most for like a home that, I won't mention the exact address, but in downtown village area Bath that we were looking at. We're like, hey, that, we think this is a danger structure. And we talked with the building official and like, hey, I went to the house, I checked it out, and I knocked on the door and there were two people living there. And so I was surprised to find out, cause I've then had dealt with this at local level before. I was like, okay, so, like, is it a danger structure or not? They're like, no, what mug? That's one of the key factors that determines if it's a danger structure, if it's occupied. We'd have to work with the Michigan Health Department. To get them to say that's, you know, unfit for human habitation, get them removed from the structure. Then we would be able to come in and evaluate it for a danger. So there's like all of these layers and steps to it. It's not. And for good reason, you know, it's so, these are in place so a community can't just come in and say, danger structure, you're out. Okay, sorry, that was a tangent. Um.
That was great.
Other, um.
Lot more things there.
Other things.
So we talked about sidewalks or pathways for biking.
Yeah, we talked about orange street parks. You know, we didn't talk about roads. You want a roads question in there?
Well, I, I'm just trying to think of things that came up in the last meeting.
Would that be strategic? More strategic than master?
No, roads would be within the purview of a comp plan. They could also be within the purview of a strategic, but that might be an area where there's crossover.
I just noticed during that last, that meeting that we were at, roads were not up there on the list because, you know, our roads are in pretty good shape.
Yeah, for sure they are.
But that's because the money we've put into them. But if your roads start going bad, then you're like behind the, trying to catch up.
Well, well, roads should be brought in, I think, is once we get the plan of how we want the township to develop. Is, if we want this township to develop along the Webster corridor, then we need to start planning now if we're getting more right of ways. So development can happen on it.
Yep.
In a logical manner.
You see that in some cities where they, they've obviously planned.
Well, I keep bringing up Ken Township and Ford Road. It's like, how'd that happen? And Northfield Township is the same way. It's like, they've. They've got roads there that are wide roads with street trees. You'd never know what's behind those street trees, but they are, they're residential subdivisions in most cases.
Yep. They got some large brooms in some cases.
That didn't, that didn't happen last minute.
That was planning.
How would you put that into a question or?
I don't know.
So kind of on a, sorry, kind of on a tangent, what about, um, maybe dirt roads that should be paved to. Um, enhance potential development or offer options for dirt roads?
So in a question format, because that's something that has come up over the years. Are the paving of dirt roads important to you? If they click yes, follow up question. If they click no, the next question. If they click yes, follow up question, which dirt roads?
And how do you pay for them? Do you get assessed?
See, I, I think you get too into the weeds like that. But that's a good question, because that's a. For a policymaker, I think that is the next logical follow up question that you then have to ask. But for the general public. Like there's, they're out of it at that point. Like now you've taken them out of the survey.
Right, but they're like, all right, well, if my dirt road gets paved, then that means now that's gonna get developed.
Right.
Or maybe subdivided anymore. I'll just, well, I don't want that.
Yeah, but then that's where they just click no. And then when you say, oh man, a hundred people took the survey, sixty said, no, I'm paving dirt roads. All right, that's a non-issue.
Well, that's true. Well, okay, I mean, you first wanna know if they live on a dirt road or not, right? If you live on.
I would like.
Drive.
Yeah.
I would like some dirt roads paved that I don't live on, so that I could drive them more.
Well, we'll know from the response, cause I'm sure one of the first questions we're gonna ask and they won't have to provide it, but most people are willing to provide is, you know, in what area of the township do you live? Either by dropping a pen or filling in an address.
Yeah, that question on the survey Monday's meeting, it was impossible to zoom in efficiently.
Okay.
There were lots of problems with how they ran, collected the data.
Which survey?
At the Monday, Monday meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Webster portion of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And whoever that consultant was, not your people, but the other one that.
Yeah.
Larry?
Hurry. He was, he was not excellent.
Oh, you the last consultant?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. We thought you did all right.
Yeah.
No, he, he, he made some pretty tragic errors. One was, we're like, well, can we, uh, include additional items up beyond what you have listed here? And he's like, well, you can, but I just, I'll just ignore them. So you don't say that as a facilitator and then you don't.
Yeah.
Do a off color joke about cougars.
Yeah. No, I get that. But yeah, we didn't, we didn't, he's not our consultant, he's a strategic consultant. So I guess talk to, uh.
It's not my issue. I'm just saying like.
Talk to the chair.
He was not good. But that's good to know about the mabby issue.
I know, I know. There was one person that asked a question that he kinda blew the person off. It's kinda like, well, you don't understand.
Yeah.
It still happened. The question this person asked was the same question I asked about construction code enforcement.
Yeah, which we talked to him at the end. And yeah, he was just like, yeah, I got these from the website. But we pointed out after, we were like, actually, this is on the website. So what happened? Um, okay, uh, I think we got a pretty healthy list. That's a lot. I think Giffel was gonna be like, okay. Um, but we'll work with them. We'll try to get you guys some.
Giffel's and they're, they're part of the survey and stuff. The part I was disappointed, they had this stuffy dude on the phone.
Mm-hmm.
Don't, didn't, it didn't allow a lot of interaction because people are trying to handle all the stuff in and stuff like that. It's like.
I feel like that is a classic error that planners make because we are so like data driven sometimes. We lean too heavy to that side of it and less on the personal side. That's what's, it's a funny thing about the planning.
Well, I think what they could have done is, is given people that and say, okay, go home and fill this thing out and submit it back to us or how are they gonna do it?
Yeah.
Electronically.
But then people don't. So there's pros or cons.
Well, there's pros and cons.
But yeah.
But, but, but it was so tight to do that.
I mean, either way, I think like John, you went, just to put it on a positive note a little bit though, like you went to the meeting with the county. And you saw how that played out. And you also saw how many people attended. I thought we had almost a similar amount of people in terms of numbers. And I thought our discussion was far healthier than what was at the county one.
Yes. Sounds good. At the county one, all the one people wanted to do was talk about getting rid of the property tax.
Yeah, as asked my taxpayer, we're definitely sure it's out in force. Um, but, so there, I think there, it could have been done better, but I definitely think it could have been done worse. So I'm kinda like, we did okay.
Yeah. Like my only, well, I don't, I, I won't say my only complaint, but my one observation, as soon as I walked into the room, I was like. Well, this is just all the people who come to everything.
Yeah.
Like if you, I, I think I said to my husband, if I had made a bingo card of who was gonna be in that room ahead of time, I would have filled it up. I would have had the full card.
I moved to create bingo cards for events.
We thought we had a couple people that we weren't expecting. Like we had some representation from the school that we thought were good.
Yeah.
But it, I mean, that is one of those things. And that's where the meeting people where they're at, we're gonna set up a table at some softball games and stuff. That's where that will be important.
Yeah. It's, it's, there's one, there's one comment at the table I was sitting at about the fire department, which is not a positive comment at all. I don't know what his first comment with the fire department was.
What was the comment?
What's that?
What was the comment?
The fire department was a shit hole. That was exact words, what he said, what he said.
Really? Shots fired.
I don't know why.
All right. Well, John, uh, Chair, can we move to the second item that was discussing the, just for sake of time, I guess, uh, discussing the, um. Can't, uncanceling of the second meeting?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. What's the question's, uh, pleasure?
Move to uncancelled second meeting of the month of July of two thousand twenty-five.
And all support. Okay. Can we just have a voice call? Those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Hearing them, well.
That's the twenty second?
Meeting, Miles.
All right, that sounds good. I'll work with Taylor, get it uncancelled on the township's official counter. I'll, I'll send out an email so Mark can see that's going on too. And, um, just as a reminder to everybody. Yep, twenty second.
Will you be able to send out drafts of the survey prior to that meeting?
I will, I believe I'll get them on the fourteenth, so I could send it out when I get it. But yeah, we'll put together a probably like a, a smaller impromptu packet. Like we might not have these minutes even in the packet yet, so.
Well, let's plan that it's gonna be a working meeting that I don't think there's really gonna be any business to conduct.
Okay.
So if somebody comes and they wanna put something on the agenda that's gonna take action, just tell them no.
Yeah, no, this was our intention was to put this as the only item.
So it's like a special meeting.
Yeah, it's like a special, but since it, we're, we're uncanceling a regular scheduled meeting.
Correct.
So we don't have to get caught up in the noticing requirements for special meetings. Yeah.
Right.
But either way, I think the style of the intention that we discussed was a working meeting, one item, that way we can spend time talking about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, is that okay?
That's good. Thank you.
Yep. So Miles, did you have anything you wanted to report on?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, cause I know it's gonna lay all quickly, uh, the visioning session, I thought it went well. I kinda just alluded to it anyways. Um. There was a, a good turnout. There was some definite, like the regulars. Um, I thought we had a good discussion. Uh, I thought it was better and healthier and more informative than the county did. So not just a comparison to them all the time, but you know, I, we did, we did okay job. I thought there were pros and cons. I thought that. It got, it did get a little like quiet and data driven with our, um, the comp plan side of it. I thought the discussion and people were playing off each other better in the later half of the meeting. Um. Grant updates, uh, we are, we just filled out our Q two report for the, uh, planning grant. That's the one that is helping us pay for Giffel Webster Services and helping us pay for just the general stuff that's, we're doing to go through this comprehensive planning process. Um, it's always, it, it's, if anybody's ever done a grant before, I know what it takes to do reporting on grants, especially with some of these state agencies and federal agencies, that it is work. Um, we're also engaging with LEAP staff to figure out when and how we will go about receiving the funds. For the placemaking grant that we received from MEDC. So I think in August, I wanna say, well, those funds will start kicking in. And we're working with the road commission to start buying some of the materials now and they'll hold that under their budget and then be reimbursed. Just so we can get the items here and get this project wrapped up. Um. Uh, general department updates, obviously Ally is back from Europe. Uh, she did her study abroad. Um. Bobby has still been with us through the summer, which we appreciate. And I personally appreciate it because, um, it's less, uh, training that we have to do. And it's always nice to keep interns a little bit longer. Um, Bobby's been helping us more with the record management side of things. Um, and even moving into some of the building department duties where there's crossover between building and planning with some of our permitting. Um. Other than that, uh, developments have been, commercial developments have seemed a little bit slower this year.
Good.
Um, housing development in the township is a little bit slower right now. We kinda always this time of year get into like a midsummer slump. Like we get super busy during the end of winter, early spring. Cause people are like, they've been waiting all winter to fix their deck. And so we just get a ton of permits and then we slump around this time of year because everyone's going on vacations with the family. Fourth of July up north, what have you. And then in the fall, we're steam right back up. Cause like, I gotta get this done before winter. So kinda in that midsummer slump right now. Um, but yeah, other than that, things are going good.
Good. And I see there's no public. They left us. So Kate, do you got any thing new that, um?
Um, just to share from our most recent meetings, I, I had intended to share the, the moratorium. I feel like we hit that on the storage units. Um. There may be more discussion on it, but, um, other items of interest to the planning commission from the board of trustees meeting. Uh, last night's meeting superintendent Hildebrand gave a project update, which included, uh, the Chandler Road Corridor project. Um, I'm not sure how familiar, familiar you are with that, cause it hasn't been discussed really here in my time on the planning commission. But originally there's a, was a project, there's a project planned to, um, do some work on the Chandler Road Corridor between. Um, is it?
Always south to Lake Lansing Road.
Yeah, almost, not, not that far, but, um, but in coordination between Bath Township. Clinton County Road Commission, Dewitt Township. I don't know, was East Lansing involved in that too?
It was supposed to be East Lansing, Bath, Road Commission and Drain Commission.
And Drain Commission and not Dewitt?
Yeah, East, not Dewitt, yeah. East Lansing though is largely to your comment, been kinda cut out of the process most cause just the funding's not there.
Right. So originally they came up with a twelve million dollar need. They got ten million dollars.
Four years later.
Right. And now the cost of that twelve million dollar project is really probably more like sixteen million dollars. We still only are getting ten million dollars. So it's kinda been a back to the drawing board in terms of, all right, well, if we only have ten million dollars. Do we wanna put in some more of our own money? I know they tried seeking some more money and didn't get much luck with that. Do we wanna redo the project? Do we wanna do a little combination of all of the above? But, um, long story short. Um, any work is not gonna happen at least until twenty twenty-seven. So.
That's, yeah, that's what.
And it also is leaving the sewer upgrades from happening, which I know we had a project introduced, the, the NOCA. Others, the next NOCA, um, is relying on that sewer upgrade. So that would push that project back as well.
And they've been made aware of that, yeah. I mean, they always knew that.
Yeah. But yeah, so if you were wondering when they were coming back, it's gonna be not anytime soon. Um, we also had the Gary Lane. Planned unit development introduced to us last night. And Miles, um, spent a lot of time explaining.
Sorry.
Pro, public and private roads. No, I think it was needed.
Yeah.
Um, I feel like I get a lot of this explanation just be, from being on the planning commission. You know, this is probably the sixth time I've seen the packet of stuff for the Gary Lane. You know, this is probably the sixth time I've seen the packet of stuff for the Gary Lane, but it's the first time for everybody else, for the most part. So I think it's really helpful to have all that explanation, but the action that we took to approve it. Triggered the creation of some new ordinance language related to the planning commission's ability to take that action regarding private roads, so.
Yeah, that was under the advice of legal counsel to shore up the view that the planning commission took. Um with the ability to flex under the PUD language, they're like, okay, you know, that's fine, like, let's just create clarity in chapter fifty-eight. Like, that provides that flex, so. It's a regulatory ordinance, they wanted to shore that up in the regulatory ordinance, and so that's now traveling with the development.
And I, I know you heard Kami wasn't there last night, the developer was not there, so. I think there will be some more questions and some discussions, I think, I think there is some. Up in the air feelings about private roads and what to do with them, but again, balancing the need for development and tax revenue. So, um, that is still playing out and I think we'll see it again at our next meeting.
No, I actually don't think so cuz we have to notice a public hearing and then also um. The supervisor gave us a additional condition they want us to work with legal on, I don't think we're gonna get the opinion.
Green space.
Back from them in time.
Okay, so then that would be the end of August then, cuz the August, the August fourth meeting has been cancelled. To allow this room to be prepared for the August fifth election, or I guess it's an election.
Yeah.
School bond vote, I mean, nobody's really being elected, but I still, I guess, consider an election.
But it's still election.
Yeah, um, I guess you're electing your choice, um. So those, those were the major things that I think um most related to the planning commission. Um, there were some other project updates, we're in phase four of Webster Road, um, and, and the sidewalks. Other than that, I think that was.
Yeah, so I just wanna clarify my understanding, so legal counsel related to Gary Lane indicated that we have. Weaknesses in our ordinance language that we have to clean up, you, you had said something that carries with the developments?
Yeah, they, they recommended that because the planning commission took the view that there's flexibility, which they're like, yeah, it's a view you could totally argue that they could take. Um, that there's flexibility within the PUD language when it comes to private drives, they're like, well, private drives is in the regulatory section. And I explained at the board that where we've seen this in our most recent history is the interplay between zoning and regulatory is in the marijuana sections. And what we did during that marijuana process is we created clarity between the two sections of how they interplay. So they're like, yeah, we should, like, you know, you don't have to do it, but we should, the best thing to do is. Create the clarity of how they interplay between PUD flexibility and. It's, it's literally just catchall, it's like one sentence in the chapter fifty-eight that says, the planning commission has its authority, I'm paraphrasing. At, as its authority through the site plan review process, under specifically the land use of planning and development, has the ability to deviate from the standards of this section. Which is the view you guys took, so they're like, okay, just say that, that way that's all shored up and bind up nicely and then take it forward, so. Then the.
You realize we took that to break it so that it would come to the point of us fixing it.
Well, you guys, it's not yours to fix cuz it's a regulatory ordinance.
No, but the interplay between the two, I'm assuming we'll have to visit, revisit the ordinance language.
It already states that in there.
It's, the, the PUD language does, but it's gotta be clarified in the regulatory ordinance, which is an action of the board. So then the other condition that, we had a condition in the staff report that said that access and all other township required easements. Will be granted from the developer to the township, uh the supervisor wanted to see instead of an easement, if we could do a boundary adjustment to get. Uh where our parcel that has the soccer field is actually a Bath Township parcel, the parking lot actually falls on the, whatever it is. Like uh key, C and K parcels, whatever they're called, C and K development. Can we do a boundary adjustment to actually make that parking lot work for the soccer field part of the de, Bath Township? Which was not how it was worded, uh the only hesitation from the legal perspective is can you legally require a developer to give you property? I, it was indicated from the developer, that's what they wanna do anyways, but so that's just what we need to get an opinion on, that's gonna take probably longer than. A week and a half.
How does that affect their green space?
Well, that was the first le, that was the first very, uh we, that brought, got brought up too. That was the very first legal opinion we got on this project, cuz even when it was intro'd at the planning commission, Mr. Kessler stated. That he would like to use the open space. Uh that's shown on the site plan as open space, but then also donate some of that open space to the township. As I just alluded, uh talked about, and we got opinion from legal saying, cuz the question's, okay, can you do that? Can you use something as open space, but then donate it, and the opinion came back from legal is, yes, this has happened, there is case law around that. And it's not in violation of your ordinance, so you're fine.
I think that's it.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you, okay, any commissioner, we've had long talks, anybody got anything else they wanna say? Go ahead, George.
Uh I would just ask that the members take a look around some of the communities, I, I noticed like Bloomfield Hills and Langsberg. They have signage, but it's not like Meridian Township, so I noticed all Meridian Township signage is this elaborate, large signage. Which I don't know if that really fits, in my opinion, to the Bath Township, but we have a short, kind of a short name. And uh we have got, like if you use blue and white as the bath colors, they're pretty, you know, easily readable. And uh so I wanted you to look at some of the smaller signs like Langsberg has when you come out of Langsberg, they're kinda funny shaped. But if we could have a nice shaped oval round, whatever, an oval, some type of signage that would be plain and easily readable. But maybe the size of a stop sign, so I just wanted to throw that out to you, Miles, cuz I know you work on some of this stuff. And uh you could use a fancier post or something, that way we might be able to have more signage, like at all of our, we don't have that many. What you Chandler Road, Coleman Road, uh you know, Clark Road, where you're going in and out of our township. They'd be very readable, very easily replaceable.
Yeah.
But I just wanted you to take a look at some of the other kinda townships or places that have them, they're not great big gigantic signs. Maybe they would be fit more ru, to our rural uh settings, and then some of, some of the directional signage too is. I noticed larger, maybe we could use larger letters, that would be more readable, but again, with our colors, that would be very legible even at night. And just take a look at that, think about that, and then I wanted to thank uh. Uh Miles and your team for the packets that you put together, we've got great packets that are well put together, that are. Easily readable for us and I'm appreciative of that and being able to get all of you out of time and ask questions. All the hard work you guys do, I see at the other meetings like Monday, when we went to the meeting, you guys were all there, you're, yeah, all your interns and everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, George, anybody else?
Yeah, a question about privates, private roads. The way we look at private roads, a private road means it's not maintained by the county. What does that do when you say it's a private road as far as it being open to the public? Only to the residents of there or?
Well, because of, I see where this is going, because of all the traffic right now, Haakahol is like a uh through fair right now.
Well, yeah, in part, it's a private road.
But, yeah, I mean, that is, that is, they've always been the incentive for the road commission to do something with mog and drive there. Because it is a through path, but if, again, yeah, it's private, so the entity you in control of that. If they so choose to go out there and put up a concrete barrier, that would be their legal ability.
So like on Anne Drive, if somebody on Anne Drive wanted to put a gate up to say, you can't come down through here, the question kept on.
Yep, as long as they provide an aux box and access to emergency vehicles.
The question for me came up on, on Kessler's development of having a, an emergency access out the backside of his development.
Mm-hmm, that's a condition, yeah.
Yeah, remember the car, we oughta, we oughta make out a sixty-six foot wide, wide rightway out there, just so in the future, if something happened in Anne Drive that actually gets developed. The street, then we've got a connection to it that when you have cars connected to it. That was my point of trying to get something wider than just an eighteen foot wide strip.
Yeah, no, I get that.
Just, it, it's kinda the, the long range planning of. Through the streets, you gotta get the right way to do it.
Yeah.
So really than these, a private road then.
I mean, private road means private road.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think you guys should lean on the uh, either the road commissioner or the contractor. Say here, how much you're gonna give us for the use of our road?
Well, it's not mine, it belongs to the cottages.
Well, then they have to do it.
Yep.
They oughta get some money out of it.
Once that road's fixed to county standards, we might take it over.
Well, maybe they should bring it up to county standards for the use of the road. It's all about negotiating.
Are you gonna come out of the road commission, commission, commission budget?
Yeah.
Charge it to the project. Anybody, anything else? Let's have a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Is there a second? Those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, let's say we're adjourned.
Thank you, Jim.